Well, good morning. It is now nine o'clock a.m. and I would ask that you please stand for the invocation. And we're going to ask Chaplain Charles Jackson, who represents our Sheriff's Office, to come bring the invocation if you will, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. Eternally God, we ask your blessing upon this commissioners' meeting. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Lord, stir our intentions to align them with your will. Remind us, Lord, of your faithful provisions when our efforts fail us and when we fall short. May all glory go to you when we reach the finish line and climb over benchmarks. Keep us physically safe and guard our hearts and minds from pride and selfishness. Keep love at the forefront of our minds today and the guiding light for all we set out to accomplish and celebrate. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we welcome you all to today's meeting. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. At this time, are there any revisions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, we accept, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda as published. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. The agenda is unanimously accepted. We'll now move into our proclamations for this morning. The first one, we ask that Ms. Melissa Robinson to please come forward to present the proclamation for the 2019 Fair Housing Month.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of Fair Housing Month for April 2019, whereas in April of each year, the United States of America celebrates the signing of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 enacted under President Lyndon Johnson following the aftermath of the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Title VIII of the Act is commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Fair Housing Act enunciated a national policy prohibiting discrimination concerning sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and familial status. And whereas April 11, 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas there are two goals of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, with the first goal being to end housing discrimination and promote diverse inclusive communities. The second goal referred to as affirmatively furthering fair housing embodies our strongly held American values of fair access and equal opportunity. And whereas diverse inclusive communities with access to jobs, schools, health care, and transportation and housing are crucial to the prospering of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that our commitment to fair housing is a living commitment, one that reflects the needs of America today and prepares us for a future of true integration. The Board of Commissioners of Henry County do hereby join in the national celebration by proclaiming April 2019 as Fair Housing Month and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Henry County to abide by the letter and the spirit of the law. Signed this second day of April, June Wood Chair and attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk. And this morning, we have several people from the Georgia Commission on Equal Opportunity Office of the Governor. We have Shawzia Thomas, the Executive Director. We have Alana Lane Cross, Fair Housing Division Director, and Maurice Foster and Brianna Wilburn, Compliance Officers.
So, we'll ask the Board to come down and then remain standing down as we'll then have a proclamation after that one as well. So, Board, if you will, join me, please.
7 through the 13th of this year. It reads, "Whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week is envisioned as a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims. And whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas crime can leave a lasting impact on any person regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas incorporating communities, existing experts, and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors develops a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. And whereas with the unwavering support of their communities and victim support providers behind them, survivors will be empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and hope without fear of judgment and will feel understood, heard, and respected. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas the Henry County District Attorney, the Henry County Solicitor General, and the offices, as well as law enforcement agencies in Henry County, are hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 7 through the 13th, 2019 shall be known as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in Henry County. And they reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year, and expresses their gratitude and appreciation for those who provide services to victims of crime so that they may find assistance, support, justice, and peace. Signed on the second day of April by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, attested by this county clerk, Stephanie Braun. We have the District Attorney, Darius Patillo, Solicitor General Pam Bettis, and staff members from the Victim Services here to accept the proclamation. Come up for pictures.
Well, we thank you all, and we do honor our Fair Housing Month and also our National Crime Victims' Rights Week, so we thank you all for being here and being a part of that. We're now moving to our next agenda item, which relates to the recognition of our Henry County employee retirements, and so we'll invite up Ms. Sherri Matthews up for the presentations.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I do apologize, I think the agenda did have Brad Johnson, but he is taking a much-needed vacation. As in continuing with our tradition, we would like to recognize two employees who are retiring from Henry County this year, or obviously last month. We have Kip Henson with the Fire Department. He was a Fire Lieutenant and EMT. He is retiring with 25 years of service. And then we have Tina Partain, who is a Deputy Clerk III, who is retiring with 20 years of service. Both employees are elated that the Board of Commissioners is recognizing them, but chose not to be here this morning, but just wanted to take the time to say thank you for your service.
We thank you that we can use your services as well with those years. Again, those are to be, we commend them. So, now we'll move into the next item, which is the introduction of our Deputy Tax Commissioner, and we'll invite up our Tax Commissioner, David Curry.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. With the announcement of two retiring, I have the announcement of one coming home. I have the privilege of introducing someone this morning that probably needs no introduction. We were able to convince Mr. Michael Harris to come back and join us at the Henry County Tax Commissioner's Office. And I'd like to say that the county government, the Tax Commissioner's Office, and the citizens of Henry County are very fortunate for the addition of Mr. Harris to the Tax Commissioner's Office.
Thank you, David, and thank you all. Just thrilled to be back again. I was told, David, it's been quite a bit of a homecoming coming back. I see a lot of familiar faces, so it's kind of coming back into these chambers again. Brought back a lot of memories, so looking forward to working with the Board, looking forward to working with staff. Had a chance to work with Sherri for a number of years, and a lot of the staff members, so excited to be back and thrilled to be able to work back in the community that I live in, so excited to be here.
So, if you see him walk around the hall, he's not lost. He's one of us again, okay? So, if you ever need us for anything, certainly don't hesitate to reach out. And again, thank you for allowing us to be a part of the agenda today.
All right, well, very good, and we welcome you, Mr. Harris. And yes, you're no stranger by any means, so again, thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
All right, thank you. Okay, on our next agenda item, we have our Henry County Water Authority to address the Board of Commissioners regarding stormwater fees, so we'll invite up Mr. Farmer and guests to come forward. So, I see Mr. Welch, who is approaching the podium, so good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners. It is indeed a privilege to be here this morning with you. We have our Board members who are with us today, join us in the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority Board. These are your appointees. We have Chairman Jimmy Carter is with us this morning. I was asking to stand or wave. Also, our Board Member Zouina Poole has just joined us. There she is. Our Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Carlotta Harrell, is on her way. And then Ms. Clotania Latran Stidham is also here. She's in the front row. And then last, we have Mr. Warren Holder is also back here. Our Executive Director, Mr. Lyndy Farmer, is with us as well. And our staff member Scott Sage is also with us as well. And Tony Cornell, our Assistant Director, is also with us this morning. So, we're honored to be here this morning just to speak with you a little bit about the importance of the NPDES Phase II Permit Program that we have a partnership with Henry County on. This is the national, this is the, sorry, the non-point source elimination permit program that the federal government administers through the state. And the Board of Commissioners and the Board with the Water Authority, these two entities have worked cooperatively together for many decades on this particular issue dealing with stormwater. These are your non-point sources where we have pollution that enters our streams and works their way through the tributaries down to our reservoirs. As you all know, the reservoirs provide the essential drinking water for all the citizens in Henry County and actually in other jurisdictions such as Spalding and Butts County. This program, Henry County, is required by law to comply with the U.S. EPA's Stormwater NPDES Phase II Permit Program. There are two elements to this program. One is to reduce pollution, and the other is flood control. Pollution abatement is extremely important, and we have had a partnership between the Board of Commissioners and the Water Authority on pollution control through stormwater regulation. As you operate a stormwater utility, and that utility in part is helping to comply with that permitting process. Annually, the Board of Commissioners, Henry County submits to Georgia EPD an annual report on water quality. The implementation of this program, this permitting program that we are required to implement, I think in your first or second year of five-year phase-in, as the population of Henry County grows, there are more permit requirements that have to be met. Part of that permit requirements, in fact, you just submitted, Rocky Romero, your new interim director, just submitted in February to Georgia EPD, a very lengthy document that is the permit submittal, the annual submittal that's required. And in that, and as a part of that, there are educational opportunities whereby the public is to be educated on the importance of stormwater management and not dumping into our streams. One of those facilities where this is ongoing education is at the Kupahachi Center that is operated by the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority. In addition to that, the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority has historically done biological testing, chemical testing of our streams in our major basins throughout Henry County. And we have partnered, the Board of Commissioners and the Water Authority Board have partnered over the last decade and a half on this biological testing. In fact, the Water Authority started the biological testing years ago before you started your stormwater utility, and since then, you've entered into intergovernmental agreements with the Water Authority whereby the Water Authority administers that program, does the biological testing, or at least has the consultants to do those biological testings, then remits, sends that information to your staff. That staff submits that biological information, that chemical information, back to EPD as part of your NPDES permit compliance. And you had a long partnership in that, and we are here today to thank you for that partnership because I think it is beneficial. For what reason? Because we're here to protect the water supply that is essential to the citizens of Henry County and to prevent the pollution of that water supply. Henry County Water and Sewage Authority has been given numerous awards for the quality and taste of its water. We have to thank you. We have to thank your stormwater department for being a good partner in that relationship. With that relationship, the two that we have together, and that joint project together on testing water quality throughout this county, we have some of the best water in the entire state of Georgia. That is not a small feat, and that requires a good partnership between the two entities. And you'll notice on your agenda, you have an item 15 on your agenda. This is an acknowledgement under your stormwater utility ordinance that there are certain properties that Henry County operates. Large agrarian tree farms that are spray fields for the treatment of wastewater, the reservoirs themselves, and our water treatment facilities throughout the county. Those provide the catchment basins and undeveloped properties of the Water Authority that we do not think should be taxed or having a rainwater fee placed on them because they're undeveloped or they are contributing to the catchment system for stormwater throughout the county. However, as staff, our staff and your staff have been working together over a several year process to identify each and every parcel and to identify what that stormwater implication is, we have, both staffs have concluded and we have agreed that the main campus of the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority located off of Highway 20 is subject to your stormwater utility requirements, and so we have remitted payment back to you for those stormwater, past stormwater fees that need to be collected, the service charges, and we've paid those back to the county. The other, the exemption that we're requesting is for all of those other properties, the undeveloped land and the reservoirs themselves, that obviously are not contributing to stormwater but actually serving to catch and protect our water quality system. And so you have that as item 15 on your agenda, and we hope that you will give a favorable consideration to that because that just extends the very cooperative partnership that we have had between the Board of Commissioners and the county. And with that, I would just like to be available to take any questions about any of these issues that you've seen or the resolution that you have before you later today.
All right, well, we thank you, Mr. Welch, for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none, we appreciate the presentation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Okay. So now at this time, we will welcome up Ms. Laura Luker, the Director of Tourism from the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau for their presentation as well.
Thank you. Chairman, Council, Commission, I appreciate you allowing me to come and do our annual presentation for the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau. As, I am Laura Luker, and I am the Director. Thank you. I am not very tall, so, let's see, is that better? Okay. So, I am the Director for the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau is Henry County's official destination marketing organization. And a destination marketing organization is a private sector nonprofit that is set up specifically for the promotion of tourism to encourage travelers to visit a destination, in this case, Henry County. And we are under the umbrella of the Chamber, but it is important to note that we have separate financials, separate bank accounts, a separate Board of Directors, and that Asia and I are full-time staff for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. As such, our Board of Directors is made up of members of the hospitality and tourism community, and each of the cities as well, and the county have a representative on this board that serves their interests on the board so that everybody, all the entities that are affected and impacted by tourism have a voice in the decisions that we make regarding tourism and tourism promotion. So, we are funded through what is called bed tax or hotel motel tax, and this is a fee, or excuse me, not a fee, it is a tax that is levied by the county against hotel rooms or any type of overnight accommodation, but in this case, it's hotels. And it's divided between restricted and unrestricted funds. So, the county, the hotels collect that money, and then when they receive, they collect it, they send it to the county, and then the county in turn divides it between the unrestricted and restricted funds. So, the way that the law reads says that a certain percentage of the funding that is collected through hotel motel tax must be considered restricted and used only for the promotion of tourism conventions and tourism conventions and trade shows. It's sometimes called TCT, so you'll see that in the presentation. And the way it is split is the first 3% that are collected are considered unrestricted. That means that they go to the county, they stay with the county, and that the government, county, city, whoever's collecting it, can use it in any way that is legal. And then the next 2% are required to be provided, given to a private nonprofit that is set up for the promotion of tourism and used for the promotion of tourism. So, I think it's just also important to note that the way that tourism conventions and trade shows, that TCT is what it is kind of in the law regulated and how it is specified is that it is for the planning, conducting, or participating in programs of information and publicity that are designed to attract or advertise tourism's conventions and trade shows, and it's expended by that destination marketing organization for those purposes. It is not for infrastructure. It cannot be used for capital projects. It can't be used to build things, but it can be used to advertise existing assets. And so this is kind of a breakdown of what that looks like in a visual sense of how that 60-40 split breaks out. So, the county keeping the 60% that is unrestricted again can be used for any legal government purpose. And here is just kind of the extrapolation of what 2018 hotel motel tax looked like. So, this is what we are, based off of what we received. We don't know exactly what the county received, but based off of what we received, and we know our 2% was $361,000, meaning that the overall hotel motel tax collection would have been somewhere around $900,000. So, that money came into the county, then the county was able to keep about $542,000 that is considered unrestricted, and I'm sure you can ask your finance department specifically what that money was used for because that is not what we worry about. That is your money to do with as the government sees best. So then we are only concerned about that $361,000 that is considered restricted and used according to the way the law specifies. And what we do is we are an organization that has three, excuse me, four entities. We represent the Henry County Convention, or Henry County Board of Commissioners, the City of Stockbridge, the City of Locust Grove, and the City of Hampton. So, we overall, over 2018, spent about 400, excuse me, $649,000 promoting tourism in Henry County and in its cities. So, we were able to leverage your 361 with everybody else's partnership, and so you saw basically a two-to-one ratio of benefit to cost because of that partnership. We're able to use all funds coming in to have more advertising, better advertising, and everything that we do promotes the Henry County area as well as its cities and its attractions. Okay, so, whoops, sorry, it's a little fast. So, some of those marketing efforts, and this is at a very high level, include our website, we have a white micro wedding site, a print advertising, digital advertising, billboards, social media, tournament recruitment, retention, trade shows, press releases, press trips, visitors' guides. And again, a more detailed breakdown is included in the packet that I have given to you, or that Stephanie gave to you, it's in the blue folder. There is a detailed breakdown of what your percentage was used for. And again, remember that this just represents what your percentage was, not the total that was expended for each of those items, so you're seeing a cost savings. And so currently, the county collects 5%. You do have the option to collect up to 8%. If you were to move into an 8% tax collection, the way that the county is allowed to spend that additional money would change, the amount that would, so the additional 3% is then split 50-50. So, the county would keep 1.5%, the CBB would receive an additional 1.5%. The way that the CBB can spend their funding is unchanged. It has to still be spent for tourism convention and trade show promotion. That doesn't change no matter how the law, how the tax is collected and what percentage. But the way that the county can spend their additional 1.5% does change. That is when it can be used for tourism product development. That is more of your capital projects, your improvements, that kind of thing. So, that is an option that the county has, should it choose to do that. So some of those marketing efforts, and this is at a very high level, include our website, we have a white micro wedding site, a print advertising, digital advertising, billboards, social media, tournament recruitment and retention, trade shows, press releases, press trips, visitors' guides. And again, a more detailed breakdown is included in the packet that I have given to you or that Stephanie gave to you, it's in the blue folder. There is a detailed breakdown of what your percentage was used for. And again, remember that this just represents what your percentage was, not the total that was expended for each of those items. So you're seeing a cost savings. And so currently, the county collects five percent. You do have the option to collect up to eight percent. If you were to move into an eight percent tax collection, the way that the county is allowed to spend that additional money would change, the amount that would, so the, the additional three percent is then split fifty fifty. So the county would keep one and a half percent, the CBB would receive an additional one and a half percent. The way that the CBB can spend their, their funding is unchanged. It has to still be, still be spent for tourism convention and trade show promotion. That, that doesn't change no matter how the law, how the tax is collected and what percentage. But the way that the county can spend their additional one and a half percent does change. That is when it can be used for tourism product development. That is more of your capital projects, your improvements, that kind of thing. So that is an option that the county has, should it choose to do that. And just for big numbers, tourism is big in Henry. $283 million that was spent in Henry County in 2000, this is seventeen numbers. The state's numbers are about a year behind because they do a huge, have National, U.S. Travel Association does this study for them every year. And then why Residence Care, it saves them almost $300 per household, it's in tourism tax savings. So this is just that new money's coming in from tournaments, from pass-through travelers, from all sorts of overnight accommodations, hotels, restaurants, attractions, that are putting new money into our schools and into our, into our community that we are not having to then turn around and provide services for. So, and with that, I would like to just specifically call out, we have the honor of hosting a huge tournament in Henry County, it was about two weeks ago, and it is the single weekend largest amateur baseball tournament in the country. And in that last weekend or two weekends ago alone, they had about 362 teams come into Henry County and play tournaments. About 221 of them were from at least an hour and a half outside of Henry County. That's about the, the threshold that we think of, if, they're probably going to spend the night here. It's too long to drive, two hours, if they have a tournament the next morning at eight o'clock. So we figure they have spent, the direct spend by those teams was about $1.8 million in Henry County for that weekend alone, and that is hotels, restaurants, gas, shopping, entertainment, et cetera. And we know from our STAR report, which is a report we get that shows occupancy and revenue from the hotels, that hotels were over ninety percent occupied for that weekend. Just as a comparison point, the previous weekend was about in the seventies. So tournaments really do increase hotel, hotel stays, particularly during those really big weekends, and that generated roughly about $60,000 in taxes. That's sales tax as well as hotel motel tax. And we did a research study, we just finished our research study, and some of you had the opportunity to hear some of the results of that. And when we asked our hotels to break out where they saw the majority of their guests coming from, or for the reasons, they said at least eight percent of their, their guests were for tournaments, they were coming in for tournaments alone. So they see, that's particularly, obviously during that March to roughly July market, that summertime, which also has a lot of other travelers coming through, but tournaments are a huge, are a huge part of that. So with that, if anybody has any specific questions, again, there's more details of this in your packet, and I could say a whole lot more because there is a lot more to say. But if you have any specific questions or if you'd like to meet with me at any point, I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with you and talk about the wonderful things that Henry County has going on.
Okay, well, we thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
Thank you, Laura, for everything. I have a question in reference to the $649,000 that comes in with the counties and the cities. Could you give me a breakdown of how much, I guess you have three of the cities?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, three of the cities, and to kind of break that $649 down. I see the counties portion, but I wanted to see the other three cities because I know that we may have more hotels than those cities. So I would like to know, what formula do you use to make sure that, you know, how it's distributed as far as going back in? You don't have to give it to me now, but that, that's one thing that I would need. And then the airshow, talk a little bit about the airshow, what the participation has been with the CBB, with the airshow, and how that's coming along with helping them to promote that into the county.
So the airshow is, I think they're starting their third year this year, and we have partnered with them, we've done a contest every year to try to drive awareness, because again, awareness, getting people from outside of Henry County to know about it is very important. Obviously, that is what we are all about, trying to drive traffic from outside in. So we've done the contest, we've done social media, we have done, we've partnered with the commission on some of your initiatives from last year to do some advertising for that as well, for some of your initiatives. And I think it has the potential, this year they have the snowbirds from Canada and the, not the thunderbirds, is it thunderbirds? Yeah, thunderbirds, not the Blue Angels, the thunderbirds coming this year, and I think that that's a huge win. A lot of teams or people are coming for those big jet, jet demonstration teams, and I think that we'll see a huge return this year. It's a great event for Henry County, it's unlike anything else, it's the only place in the country, I think, that does a stadium-style airshow. They're typically on beaches or at airwa, at airports, so this is kind of a one-of-a-kind thing, it's a whole different feel, and they do a really good job organizing it with some really great teams. So we certainly work with them, we have, we partner with them and do some digital billboards, whatever we can in order to help get the word out.
Have you done billboards in the past with them yet? Because we just need more traffic driven to that, and with all of the funds that we have, I would like to see more investment in the airshow. So I just didn't know if you've ever done billboards, you know, what are you specifically doing? I hear you saying social media, but is there anything else?
We do social, we have done billboards with them in the past. We, we have three digital billboards that are always available for any partner to have events. So we have a billboard request form that any of our partners, hotels, restaurants, attractions, events, whatever, as long as they're tourism-centric, can fill out and request to have information or have a bill, that billboard up. And so they've used that in the past to, to do some advertising as well. We do, we don't do a lot of very specific event advertising in a print form, we do a lot of it digitally because we can target it so specifically.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Laura, I could, I know we're collecting five percent, and who else is collecting five percent? Are we the only ones collecting five?
Hampton also collects five, but Stockbridge, Locust Grove, and McDonnell all collected eight.
Eight, and so how many motels does Hampton have?
One.
Okay. How many motels do we have in unincorporated area?
See, I represent twenty-seven total. I believe that Henry County has thirteen or fourteen right now. I need to double check that.
Okay. And could you describe a little bit more in detail what we could spend that one and a half percent if we did go to the eight percent?
It is a lot of different things. You could enhance your parks, you could build new parks, you could do signage, you could do, it's, there's a lot of different things you could do. You would have to make the argument that it is going to increase tourism. So it could be, I mean, pretty much anything that is, that has a tourism component, you could, you could discuss. Again, I'm, that is not my expertise, that would be something you'd have to talk to the Department of Community Affairs on to verify, and that's one of the things that we do, is that if we ever have a question as to whether or not something is a legal expense, we ask them. And so I don't want to say that anything but, because I think there are parameters, the law is very, very specific about tourism funding, but I believe that generally, as long as it has a tourism component that will drive tourism or enhance an existing tourism asset, that you can use some of that funding for.
Okay. I'll leave a comment. I got my grandson participating in Super NIT, and it was very successful, they had good weather, and, you know, meeting some of these teams, I mean, they were some teams that came all the way from Chicago.
Yes.
TNC, I mean, there was kids from all over the country, and it was very interesting. They was really appreciative of the way Henry County did their Super NIT and the way they managed it.
The Parks and Rec Department does a fantastic job of recruiting the tournaments, but the directors themselves manage all of those, the day-to-day details. They've told me before that there are three things that'll kill a tournament. One of them is bad umpiring, one of them is poor fields, and then one of them is bad organization. That if you have two of those things that are good, tournaments, you know, that the people are happy if you do, but if more than one of them is out of whack, and so I think that's a testament to the Parks and Rec Department for the fantastic job that they do to maintain the relationships with these directors that they trust, because I will just say that there's a lot of money on the line for these directors if it, if it rains. They have put forth all this time, all this money, and all this effort to organize these events, and if the weather turns bad or, and they can't have it, then they're out everything. So it's, it's an honor for us to be able to host those events, that they put their trust in us, that we are going to see it through, and that, that our facilities and that our departments are going to come through, and that their livelihood is not in danger for that. So I just, I couldn't say enough about what the job that Parks and Rec does for us, and for us as a tourism community, just from talking to the hotels and the restaurants, there is nothing else that they say is as important to them as is tournaments.
Yeah, and it's a huge economic boost for Henry County, and it's amazing how these restaurants, they order more food when we have those events.
They do, I mean, they also have to staff up as well. I sent out an email to all of the partners before a huge event to let them know to order more food and to staff up because one of the restaurants is on my board, says he has to bring in at least three more people on a Super NIT weekend because of the crowds, that he'll have anywhere from three to four teams that'll come in, and that's, a team is like twenty people, that's players and patrons, and so that might be, and all in a person does that day is just rate on teams. So it's, it's huge for, for our economy.
Thank you.
And just one last thing before you go. If you could quickly speak about, from the research that was recently done of our tourists, what are the three types of tourists that we have, the top three, and what are the top three things that the tourists say? So if you can just list those out, because we're, we've got a pretty full agenda, but I think it's important that our constituents hear some information from that research.
So the segmentation breakdown, so we did two different types of research, one where we asked the hotels what they thought, and then one where we actually talked to the actual visitors to the hotel. And so when we talked to the visitors, about twenty-two percent were business, thirty-eight percent were leisure, fourteen percent were group, and about twenty-three percent were sport. And then when we asked, and we did a perception study as well, and asked visitors what their favorite part of Henry County was, and they said tanger, the people, AMS, and the scenery. And I felt that those were very telling things. And then when asked what the least favorite thing was, they said nothing. So I think that that's amazing, that visitors see us as beautiful, they see our people as welcoming and friendly, and that they didn't have anything that they could specifically complain about. Traffic was, was the other thing. I mean, you know, it is what it is, but, but that our people shined through and were helpful and were kind, and I was super proud for us to be able to, to say that and to see that.
Thank you. Very good. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Well, we thank you for that presentation. Thank you again. Okay. So at this time now, we'll invite up Ms. Kimberly Crawford from the Power Panel to present a Prevent Human Trafficking presentation. So, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Yes, and we'll give you a moment to get set up there.
Thank you. Come on.
You can give it to the clerk. She'll give it to us. Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you all for, the commissioners, for allowing us to present to you this morning. I'm sure that each of you has something better to do than lend your time to us. I'm sure you've heard something about human trafficking, especially over the past year. It's plaguing our city and our surrounding counties. Human trafficking is not just a sex trade. And I was told that a lot of you in Henry County think that you don't have a human trafficking problem. Human trafficking isn't just a sex trade, it's a multifaceted problem. It's organ harvesting, it's migrant workers, and it is here. We are fifteen survivors, the Power Panel, and we champion House Bill 141. House Bill 141 was implemented by Senator Donzella James, and it is a poster that is supposed to be in every strip club, truck stop, convenience store, every public place. And it wasn't being enforced, and we decided, as fifteen survivors, we came together and we began enforcing it. And through that, we began to learn a lot about human trafficking and how it had become a pandemic, and they began to call Atlanta and the twelfth, the metropolitan area, the hub, and we started learning a lot about it. So this is just who the Power Panel is, and I'll give you a brief, we don't have a lot of time, so it's really short. See, you could be abducted and not even taken from your physical seat. You could be abducted from your mind because she told me it's just massages. And there I was. It became my norm. Growing up as a little girl, see, life has been very tough, but I realize I'm tougher. You know, life has made me tougher. But I'm ready, because all my life I've been losing stuff. So this is not, this is not a time for us to be upset about it, this is a time for us to overjoy us, because whatever it costs me, I'm ready to pay the price. The Lord is, there is liberty, and the implication is that where the Spirit of the Lord is not, there is still bondage. I've learned what it was, to be held in esteem, to be told I was beautiful, to have someone protect me when my mother died. So human trafficking don't have a face, it don't even have a zip code, it's from buckhead to bankhead, bankhead back to buckhead again, and that's where I live. But it don't have a face, it just has one assignment, and that assignment is to rob, kill, steal, and destroy.
And I remember falling asleep and waking up to the smell of this man. The smell, it's funny because I'm thirty-two now and I still can't get that smell.
See, that's where people don't get this stuff. You gotta get to the root of these things. If you're not getting to the root, you're just putting Neo Spray on it. After a while, baby, that thing gonna rise up again because you didn't get to the root of it. Everything you need to succeed is already inside you. That's who the Power Panel is, and that's a little bit about why we decided to do what we do. Can't find the mouse, one moment, please. So after that first inaugural Power Panel, we decided that there's something else that needed to be done, so we became Pink Boots on the Ground. Okay. It won't come back, sorry. And Pink Boots on the Ground was a second initiative. Hey, good morning, guys, welcome back to Everyday Struggle, the desk. It was a second initiative. Pink Boots on the Ground became what we decided to do. We put pink boots on and we went into high-traffic areas like Fulton Industrial Boulevard, South Hairston, where the sex trade was really high. But we realized that, we met with the FBI, and we realized that this was a thirty-three billion dollar a year industry, thirty-three billion dollars a year, and we weren't going to be able to stop it. So we just, we learned a word from our supervisory analyst, twenty-five years in the FBI, she said mitigate it. But we realized that Polaris created the hotline, the human trafficking hotline, and they told us that it wasn't working for them, they were getting a lot of calls that were traffickers calling in on each other. So we came up with Pink Boots on the Ground, which is a decentralized workforce that's dedicated individuals with an interactive AI application. It's an app that runs on the end of your phone, it runs in the background, and it will actually help human trafficking victims connect themselves to safety and rescue and ultimately to first responders. Everybody has a telephone at the end of their phone, all day long you have your telephone. When they give these girls these phones, they won't know that this application is running in the background. We have apps draining our phone all day. Visually connection to a brand that signifies and assists, rescues to victims, a brand and application that allows the general public to get involved. A lot of people don't like to get involved, they see things happening around them every day, and they're afraid to get involved. But if they had an application on their phone that they can just download and that app- if they had an application on their phone that they can just download, and that application will tell you, what street are you on? What's the cross street? What color clothes do they have on? What car are they on? Can you please input that tag number? And they can do that without actually getting involved with the trafficker or with the situation, they would probably do it, without putting themselves at risk. That's what Pink Boots does. They can observe the victim without actually alarming the trafficker, to react to a situation without physically engaging, to approach a situation from an informed perspective based on guidance and feedback from the application. It's an artificial intelligent application that tells everything to do without actually engaging, and ultimately connecting that actual Pink Boot nearby. That's a Pink Boot. It's a decentralized workforce. Actual people wearing pink boots in your airports, Greyhound stations, truck stops. This is a workforce that will actually be able to hire people as well. I need your help again. It's not opening. Every time we have a huge sporting event, does anybody know what happens? The sporting events like the Super Bowl, even the Chick-fil-A Bowl, anything like that, what happens is the sex trade triples. We have the Super Bowl here in Atlanta, and for the year before that, the City of Atlanta, the Federal Bureau of Investigations, Homeland Security, I know that the officers here know, they were preparing for the Super Bowl way before it happened. We had a partnership with the FBI where we put Pink Boots on the Ground as well.
This weekend, the San Francisco Bay Area could see as much as an $800 million boost to its local economy, thanks to Super Bowl 50. There is, however, a darker side to that boost in the business of human trafficking, a $32 billion a year industry that some reports indicate sees an uptick during major events like the Super Bowl. Congresswoman Kristi Noem and Congresswoman Barbara Comstock are fighting to expose this dirty little secret, and join us now. How did the human trafficking industry get to be as high as a $32 billion industry, and yet we don't hear much about it at all?
You know, historically, human trafficking has always been around. I think they saw a real grow in the amount of dollars are included in the industry by the invention and usage of the internet. Online websites knowingly advertising children and adults for sex has become a business that we've had difficulty fighting in.
These two congresswomen worked hard together to try to do something about human trafficking. I just wanted to show you that during the Super Bowl, there were 33 arrests made prior to the Super Bowl happening. During the Super Bowl, we worked with Pink Boots on downtown. I can't pull the PDF up. We worked on the ground. We actually ran into traffickers ourselves. What we did was take pictures and send them to the FBI so they could put them in the database. We can't engage ourselves because we're not law enforcement, but we were actually able to see it for ourselves. If we had the Pink Boots app already developed and out there, we would have been able to use that app and actually connect first responders to the situation, to those girls that we saw sitting at Centennial Park, being sold. The Pink Boots app will save lives, and it will save lives in every county, especially in our surrounding counties, where there are less first responders that have less time to actually concentrate on human trafficking. Forget about the organ harvesting. Forget about the migrant workers where the farm workers are being held. These are 25 top human trafficking facts. These facts will blow your mind. This is done in 2018. We concentrate on the last three. Number three, researchers argue that as economics worsen, people that are being trafficked will increase. So as things get worse in our economy, there will be more people being trafficked. Human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal enterprise because it's low risk, it's high profit, and it moves underground, so people aren't paying attention. There are more slaves in the world today than ever before. So we're talking about more people than the Middle Passage, more people than the Holocaust. And we live in our beautiful homes, drive our nice cars, and we're not paying attention because we're not aware of what's going on around us. The workforce that we're talking about will be recruited just like Uber or Lyft. And speaking of that, just recently, a young lady named Samantha in South Carolina left college, left her party, left her friends, and went to order an Uber. And she thought she was getting in the Uber she ordered, but she got in the car with a guy named Nathaniel, who had nothing but ill intentions on his mind. He locked her in the backseat, put the child safety locks on. If she had the Pink Boots app, she would have been able to use her phone and connect to safety and rescue. But instead, she lost her life. So that's why Pink Boots is important. Now, I have had more time, I could get into more detail. But I wanted to show you one more thing before we go. That's basically the parts of the Pink Boots application. It will save lives, and it will run on everybody's phone every day. I just want to show them this map. Our City of Atlanta and our surrounding counties, Henry County, Locktown as well, runs... So this is a map of Atlanta, of Georgia, and it's... Can you turn it around? Oh, sorry. So, as you see, we have Tennessee, we have Carolinas, and we have Alabama. 75 South runs right through our state, surrounding us and all the other states. Every truck that comes through, comes through our state to 75 South, which we are the gateway to the Southern Sea Force. The trucks come through here, and what we want you to realize is that behind those trucks, they're not carrying just onions and tomatoes. They carry human cargo. We need to stop those trucks coming through our state. The weigh stations aren't working anymore. What we created is a program called Headed for Human Cargo, where we stop them and check them for human cargo as they come through our state. Stop them for solicitation, stop them for safety, stop them for suspension, and stop them for speed. And we will see that they have human cargo. They're on their way to the Southern Sea Force to get the girls, the guys, or whatever they have, human cargo on and out of our country. They come through here, because this is their gateway to the Southern Sea Force. This is why we call them, they have to come through here. If we start stopping them, they'll stop coming through our state. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, very good presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Because you made us uncomfortable, and this subject should make us uncomfortable. Henry County has been inundated with this problem, and we can't turn our back on it and pretend our beautiful county that this is not here, and especially in our school system. And as an educator, I definitely want to see how I can work with Pink Boots on the Ground to try to get the word out about this problem. And I'm very, very much interested in your app that you're talking about. So hopefully, after, well, you've given me some information, so if you can't stay around, of course, I'll be trying to contact you. But again, thank you, and thank you for making us uncomfortable, because the clients that are buying these people, the people that are destroying these children's lives and adults, we need to wake up because it is happening every day.
It is.
So again, I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And in our resolution, we just received a Senate resolution, part of our resolution is Atlanta Public Schools passed their first policy. Board Member Erica Mitchell fought desperately to get it passed, and she's part of our resolution. So we have permission to put Pink Boots on the Ground at Atlanta Public Schools, and we'd be happy to come to Henry Public Schools, County Public Schools as well.
Thank you. I'll contact you about that.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Well, we definitely thank you. And I think it's also very appropriate that this is, presentation is coming during National Crime Victims Week, and what I appreciate about the presentation is that it was offering a solution of some, some things of what needs to be considered. So again, we appreciate that presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, at this time now, we'll move into our financial update. And again, this is an informational-only presentation, and we welcome up Mr. David Smith, our Director of Financial Services.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners in the Henry County community. As I see we have a full agenda, I will endeavor to be brief. This presentation covers the February financial report and SPOS. Eight months of our fiscal year is currently presented. We've now collected 85% of our revenues and expended 58% of our budget. Key note here is that revenue collections are $3 million better than prior year. On the expenditure side, vacancies drive positive variances. Our next slide is the financial report. As you can see, as we expend, we're continuing to use fund balance. And if we spend at this budgeted rate, that $45 million difference will be paid out of our cash balance over this period of time. The next item is a graphical representation of this fact, year-to-date actuals versus our annual budget status. Wanted to show you a year-over-year comparison. As you see, we're doing much better year-over-year in terms of the revenue presentation. I'll show you a graphical representation of how this looks. And this is our standing February 2019 over February 2018. So let's take a look at fund balance. If you recall, in prior months, our fund balance was way up over $81 million, and now it's starting to decline because of the expenditure increases. This is our SPOS revenue county collections only. We continue to trend better than budgeted SPOS revenue collections on cumulative average. On the expenditure side, we're basically trending less. We aren't spending as much in our SPOS dollars. The next slide is a graphical representation of this fact. The blue line being the budget line, revenue, as you can see, being high, still higher than budget. Expenditures are trending down. A part of this could be that we haven't fully accounted for all of the expenditures in February, for the month of February, because we implemented Tyler Munis, so some payments are behind. This concludes the financial report of my presentation. Are there any questions?
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, here in Non, seeing none, we thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, well now, schedule for our next informational update regarding our insurance, and we'll invite up Mr. Christopher Clark with Epic Consulting, and also Mr. Michael Gases of the Michael Gases Agency.
some update insurance information for you. You should have handouts. One would like you, for your review for a later time when you have time, is the contribution analysis has a lot of numbers on it. That tells you different scenarios of who contributes what the employer pays versus what an employee would pay. One other item you have this morning is a calendar of events where, as an agency, we keep up with all the activities, meetings, deliverables that we're supposed to do so that the HR department and the county staff knows what's happening on a month-by-month basis. And I ask you to review that at your leisure at a later time. That way, we know where we are, and we know where we're going. We don't have any surprises, and keep up with all the benefit changes and everything. Claims updates come in monthly, so you're aware of everything that's happening. We also have a slide presentation on the insurance benefits that Chris Clark will review with you now.
Appreciate the opportunity to come before you again and talk through some of the insurance items. Today, we're gonna, it's an informational session. I believe in the next couple of weeks, there'll be some more information leading up to an ultimate request for a vote in the future about some of the information presented today. So, to start off, the county's benefit program runs on a June 1 year, as I believe most of you know. And it, you know, so we typically have a renewal for June 1. Due to the computer system transition, I believe earlier it was mentioned, the Tyler Munis system, excuse me, and how it overlapped at 6-1, the senior staff had decided to push off the renewal, the typical renewal, to September 1, so that the system could get fully implemented in time for that. And we were able to obtain approvals from the different carriers for that. But we do have, you know, federal law, RISA law, requires employees to have the opportunity to make a change at least every 12 months. So we still need to do some type of enrollment for June 1. And it's what we would call a passive enrollment, which means employees don't have to do anything unless they choose to, unless they want to make some kind of change. So the passive enrollment will happen in the third week of April with no changes to any rates effective June 1. Just any, if they want to re-enroll in their flexible spending account, or if they need to make any coverage changes, they can do so at that time. Then following that, a full typical enrollment, what we would call an active enrollment, will occur in mid-July to be effective the September 1. Looking at recent history of the health benefits program will be a little helpful in understanding what we're going to say in just a minute about the renewal that we're looking at for this upcoming year. But the prior year, June 17 to May 18, the carrier, you would remember, most of you would, is Blue Cross at that time. And they lost a significant amount of money on the coverage in that prior year and the, and last year, and they were seeking a fairly large renewal increase last year. And we marketed the program and ultimately decided, with the board's approval, to move to Cigna. And that reflected at that time, a year ago, a 6% increase from the year before, but it was about an $800,000 savings to the renewal we were facing from Blue Cross. In the current year, with Cigna, they've also been losing money on the program, and our latest financial review of that through February showed that they had lost about $900,000 or about 6% of premium year-to-date. Because of that, when we, when we see that the existing carriers losing money, we know that the renewal's going to be difficult. So, talking about the Cigna medical renewal that we're looking at, Cigna, Mike and myself started talking with them a couple of months ago, really more than that, because again, we knew from tracking the costs over time that the experience was not favorable to the insurance carrier. They came and showed us that their quote-unquote formula produced what they would see as a 30% renewal. And we clearly didn't think that was reasonable, and we had our actuary rerun a renewal using their formula. And he came up with something in the mid-20s, but we don't necessarily use their formula either. So when he did, when our actuary did his calculation, he came up with what he determined a fair increase to be in the 14.5% range. When Cigna actually did release their renewal a couple of weeks ago, it came out at 16%. And since then, we've negotiated that down to 14. So what we're looking at as of today is a 14% increase for the upcoming year on the Cigna portion of the program. I did want to mention, Cigna did offer a couple of options. I did want to mention, Cigna did offer a couple of options that after review with, with the county manager's team, we deemed those not in the best interest of the county and/or your employees at this time. One was moving to a much more narrow network where the employees would have had less choice of doctors and hospitals. We didn't think that would be well-received. And another option was Cigna absorbing the Kaiser population. And that would have been a lower increase for Cigna, but it wouldn't have been low enough to offset the savings that we get from utilizing Kaiser. So neither of those got support to bring forward to you, but we did want to mention that those were looked at. On the Kaiser side, their renewal came out at zero percent again this year. It was zero percent last year. But the interesting thing there is that while on the Cigna program, they've, they've lost money, Kaiser's actually made a good bit of, you know, about a ten percent on the county. They've, they've had experience better than expected by about ten percent. So when they came out with a zero, we actually felt like it should be less than zero. In other words, it should be a reduction. And we pushed for that. Kaiser actually has a policy, though, for their renewals. They limit them to a low of zero and a high of twenty. And that's a great benefit when you're having a horrible year, because if you needed a thirty percent increase, you would be capped at twenty. But when you deserve a reduction, they, they try to cap you at zero. So we pushed hard to get a reduction and actually got a, an offer of a three-and-a-half percent reduction, contingent on the county offering Kaiser's Medicare Advantage plan in the future. And we feel like that's a win-win for the county in that situation, because if we were to offer that plan, we can get the three-and-a-half percent reduction, but also the rate on that plan's below the rate of the current Medicare Advantage plan. So if anyone decides to switch to that, it would be additional savings to the county. Obviously, we don't only have medical to worry about, so all other plans, including dental, vision, life, disability, et cetera, all of those except dental were in rate guarantees through this renewal time. On the dental plan, Cigna has offered a zero percent renewal, which we believe is fair. So looking at staff recommendations and sort of a summary of the financials, after reviewing the options with Mike and myself and our teams and the county manager and her team, we believe the following is, is the best op, option for the county for the renewal. One would be renewing with Cigna with no plan changes at the fourteen percent increase mentioned. And that equates to a two, about a two and three-quarter million dollar premium increase. Renew with Kaiser with no changes at a three-point-five percent reduction, which is just over a hundred thousand dollar reduction. And then renew all other plans with no changes to their rates. One of the things that always has to be considered when there's an increase or a change in rate is how that's gonna be shared with the employees. A separate item that was included in, in what was given you looks like this, and this was similar to a sheet that we had last year for renewal, where we showed different options for potentially sharing the, the cost increase with employees. Last year, it showed zero, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. This year, we added a ten percent option, which is closer to the current cost share, just for consideration. And again, there's a lot of numbers on that sheet, so I'll, we'll leave that for you to look over until we talk about it again in the future. And with that, I wanted to open to questions or additional discussion that you might have at this time.
At this time, are there any questions from the board, Commissioner Thomas?
I have a question. Are you saying in your presentation that the use of Kaiser is a better choice or better savings for the county?
Yes, yes ma'am.
If, if that's so, why have we not narrowed it down to Kaiser as our provider? There are many companies don't offer three and four different options. They have a sole provider. And by having a sole provider, been able to negotiate even further down
Yes, ma'am.
the cost of insurance for our employees and for ourselves.
It's a, that's a very good question. And there's a couple of different reasons for that. One is the Kaiser model is, is, is a very different model than the non-Kaiser options, meaning that it's a, it's a closed system and, and it, it restricts employee choice. And a lot of employees haven't embraced that as, as a, a way that they're comfortable with receiving their health care. And so we try to, we're, and I have, I represent a lot of counties, and all of my metro counties have Kaiser as an option. And, and the reason it's an option versus a total replacement is because of that. There's just, there's a lot of employees that may have strong relationships with physicians. Maybe they have chronic conditions that have been treated for years, different things, and, and they're just uncomfortable with that system. But since there is a savings, we like to have it as an option, because everybody who chooses it creates a level of savings to the overall program. And then sec, just real quick, though, secondly, though, and another important, maybe even more important than that, depending on perspective, is because of where employees live, you know, Henry County is near the, the outskirts of the Kaiser coverage area. So employees that you have that might be south or east of the county, where they live, they wouldn't really have access to Kaiser facilities from those areas.
Commissioner, we did that several years back when Kaiser was a sole provider. And it was, it disrupted a lot. It, it just didn't suit. It wasn't a good fit. With that plan, everyone, the over twelve-hundred employees that have Cigna or that had Blue Cross, they would lose their doctors and specialists, like totally overnight. They would have to go to the Kaiser doctors and clinics. So if you could imagine, there, there would be a large disruption. There would be a savings, but then everybody has to change the medical care. You can't go to your doctor, you can't go to your specialist.
Well, I do know Kaiser's updated some of their plans where you can opt out. It may cost you a little bit more to opt out and go to your own physician. But I would like for you and the county manager to look at that and see, because we are charged with determining how to best use the funds that the county has. And I, I agree that choice is good. I would love to have some other choices myself. But we are still, again, charged with determining how to best use funds that we have available. So I would love to get some more information from you and county manager on what other options are available to save the county money and yet provide health services as well.
But when we did it before, Kaiser did have the availability of using outside physicians, but they didn't have it ready, and it, that didn't work. Now, they are doing a new plan now.
They do.
I don't know if they rolled it out yet, whether they're gonna allow that. When I talked to our rep, he said he wasn't ready for it. They're trying it on smaller groups right now.
I can speak to that. They, they do have a newer version of the program Mike was speaking about. And the issue there is the traditional Kaiser model, the closed HMO, I would call it, is, is a more efficient, in other words, a, a, a lower-cost way to deliver health care. Their optional model that opens it up to external physicians is actually more expensive than what we can get from the traditional providers, the Signas, the Blue Crosses, Aetnas of the world. So that's why, we did look at that last year, and it wasn't cost-effective. We could certainly revisit it for this, you know, and, and show that again.
Kaiser using the outside physicians, they don't have that control that they have on the cost in, in their network. So what you'll see upfront, which looks like a great savings, they don't get discounts from the hospitals and doctors that the Cigna and the Blues get from what we're told. But we, we will look into it, certainly.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? I have a couple. One, at some point in time, can you give the board some information on the claims that we're seeing? The type of issues that we're addressing in both plans, just so that we'll know that information? The second thing is, this is a very important sheet. You mentioned that there was a potential ten percent absorption, you know. Am I looking at, I didn't?
Yes.
I see a zero percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five, ninety, and a hundred. Am I missing something?
That would be your contribution to the.
I understand that.
If you look down the right, the far-right column
Correct.
in the red boxes, they would, so scenario one, it would show the county absorbs a hundred percent. Two, ninety percent. Three, seventy-five, then fifty, twenty-five, and zero at the bottom. So it'd be the, you know, one minus that would be the share that would go to the employee. In other words, whatever the county didn't absorb, the employees would have to absorb. So those are the different.
Right, I thought you said there was a ten percent scenario as well.
It is, the ninety percent to the county is ten percent to the employee.
Got it, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Madam Chair, on the claims reviews, we can get with our finance director, Mr. Smith, and see what he has already. If he needs more, we'll go through him and get it to the board.
Thank you. And then the, the other thing, can you just remind the board about how much the county absorbed in our last plan? Because I know we had, we had different absorption rates over the last two years. So if you'll just review that, especially if you've got a new commissioner as well.
With single and family across the board, county is paying about ninety percent of the rates. And, and you know, a lot of places you don't see that. You may own employees, but you usually own families. So the county is being very generous, that is a great benefit.
And I believe to speak to your question, the, last year, I believe, the county absorbed a hundred percent of the cost increase.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Barr?
Yes, you know, we're recently fixing to open up the, the clinic. And I just want to know that you, you think this might affect our rates in any way?
Yeah, I, I would say for future years, it's not open yet. Obviously, it's gonna open very shortly. But for future years, we do anticipate it having a, a positive impact, which would, you know, make the rates. It, it wouldn't necessarily make the rates go down next year, but it should reduce the increase that we might otherwise face for next year.
And in the long run, that's what you hope for. You also hope that the clinic will help with employee wellness. People that maybe not going to the primary care physician now, you hear people, I don't have my blood pressure medicine because I gotta make an appointment and go, they can run by the clinic and get it. So twofold, it's an, it's an employee benefit for the ease of being able to go see nurse practitioner. We hope the employees will go, we utilize it and get healthier. The staff is really anticipating that and has pushed hard, hard for this. And the other thing, hopefully, in the long run, it will lower the, lower the amount of, of rate increases.
Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, all right, well, we thank you for this update.
Thank you.
All right. So we're now moving to item thirteen relating to our appointments. And this morning, we'll begin with the District Two appointee to the Department of Behavioral Health and Disabilities. And the appointee for that is Ms. Maya Collins of District Two, whose term will expire on April two, twenty-two. So at this time, we'll call for a motion for approval. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And we welcome Ms. Collins to that board. We now move to the District Two appointee to the McIntosh Trail. And our own Commissioner Clemmons is being recommended, whose term will expire in April two, twenty-two. So at this time, we recommend, the floor is open for a motion for approval. So move, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Okay, and Miss, that you may be abstaining. Thank you. Then we'll now move to the District Four appointee to the Council on Asian. And the appointee is Ms. Mildred Reed of District Four, whose term will expire in twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. At this time, the floor is open for a motion for approval.
Motion made.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll now move to the District Four appointment to the Urban Redevelopment Agency. And the appointee is Lester Clark of District Four, whose term will expire on twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. At this time, the floor is open for a motion for approval. Motion made. We have a motion? And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll now move to our next item, which is from the Building and Plan Review, which is a resolution to approve a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for traditions at Crystal Lake Phase Two. And so this subdivision is located on Jonesboro Road in District Two, and we welcome Mr. Gerald McGilvert for that presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members.
Good morning.
Today, before you, you have a resolution for a new streetlight district for traditions at Crystal Lake Phase Two, Unit One. It is a new ninety-two lot addition to Crystal Lake. They will have twenty-four proposed lights at a monthly cost of three-hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents that the county will pay. And then we will assess back to each property owner in that subdivision, fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents on their tax bill at a zero cost to the county. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Here in none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval? And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. That resolution passes unanimously. We're now moving to item fifteen, which is a stormwater ordinance to amend Section three-dash-five-dash-five-oh-eight regarding exemptions or credits applicable to service charges to the code of the Henry County, Georgia. And we welcome Mr. Rocky Romero for that presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members.
Good morning.
Staff has reviewed the code and proposed to amend Section three-dash-five-dash-five-oh-eight exemptions or credits applicable to the service charges relating to the stormwater fees. The proposed section reads as follows. Sites owned and operated by a public water system used for the development, treatment, operation, storage, convenience for drinking water or wastewater, such as water, withdrawal facilities, water treatment facilities, water storage and pumping facilities, water treatment facilities, operation facilities, and wastewater pumping stations will be exempt from stormwater fees. This was brought up, brought up last month as a, as information. At this time, we're asking for, for approval of this amendment if the board chooses to. And we'll take any questions.
All right, thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Have you guys looked at how much money we get from those fees now and how it will affect our budget going forward?
Total fees? I would defer that to David Smith.
Commissioner Clemmons, we do have the stormwater fees.
I can't hear you.
Oh, I guess I'll walk up, sorry. We do have specific numbers for the stormwater fees. In terms of affecting the budget, because the stormwater department is set up as an enterprise fund, it would not have any impact on our general fund budget. So if you give me a second, I can certainly pull up the, the numbers in terms of what is due from the Water Authority based on the fees that have been assessed to date. I think the attorney said this morning that the Water Authority did provide a payment to the tax commissioner on yesterday for the outstanding fees for the administration building. So the numbers I have will reflect that amount, because I have not taken that number off, but I will provide that to you.
So it doesn't affect the general fund budget, but it does affect a budget? Okay, and so I want to know how it affects the budget that it presently goes to? What's being paid out of that budget? What will we cut back to make sure that the county is not falling short of losing these funds? And if that hasn't been done, I would really want to see us talk about that, come up with a plan so that we can continue the partnership. But give me a plan. Give me a plan that we're gonna lose this amount of money, and this is the effect, the pros and the cons that it's gonna have, or this is how we're gonna make that money up. If there is no plan, I don't know what we're talking about today.
So the stormwater department does have a capital improvement plan that's been approved by the board. And based on that plan, there are funds that are allocated for specific projects. I'll grab the, the format that actually has the numbers, because it's. I'll grab the, the format that actually has the numbers, because it's a, I, I hate to say a small number, but it's a small number that should not have any huge impact on the capital investments that are going to be made by the Stormwater Department. But there is a capital improvement plan that has been approved by this board, and we are following that plan. I don't foresee that by reducing this amount or by exempting those certain properties, that it would result in us not being able to complete certain projects. But again, we can certainly get with our Stormwater team just to reconfirm that and I'll make sure that we provide that information to the board.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Resolution was first brought to the board. We talked about tabling it and sitting down with the Water Authority to have a conversation, just to come into agreement on which direction we should go as, as a board. That has not happened yet. And it's been about a month and a half. Is there a possibility that we can table this and actually sit down and have a conversation?
Absolutely. I mean, certainly, if the board desires to have a workshop meeting with the board members from the Water Authority, we are more than happy to do that. We've had some meetings at the staff level, but again, I think this has been going on for a number of years. And honestly, myself and Rocky have been brought into it in the last year and a half. But certainly, I think the Water Authority would be amenable to sitting down with the entire board, going over any questions that you all may have, and then specifically talking through what the plan looks like currently that the Stormwater Department has, and talking more about the collaboration between the board and the Water Authority.
Now, the other question, Commissioner Thomas, and then what kind of Commissioner Barr?
Commissioner Clemmons mentioned a plan. And in that plan, would you also include what you plan to do? Or are you going to have, are you going to move Rocky to, from interim to the full director that Hartman and may compensate him like he needs to be? Because he's doing a lot of work. Or are you planning to bring someone in so they can be part of this planning process? Because, and she stayed there, where are we going? And you need someone there empowered to help pull this plan together and implement it.
Understood.
Commissioner Barr? Yes, I certainly don't have any problem table on this and give us an opportunity. You know, we tried a couple of years ago to sit down with the Water Authority and, and for, for reasons, we didn't carry through with that. But we never did schedule any other meetings with them. And I would like to see us sit down with the Water Authority. I'd like to have an opportunity to also sit down with the Board of Education and have some conversations. But, but I certainly don't have any problem moving forward with it. The board wants to support that too, because they're going to take care of their water and their lakes, and they still going to pay the fees and all their buildings and that sort of thing. But I'm good with tabling it.
Okay, we have, any other questions? I think Commissioner Clemmons?
One of the things I know from staff, we've been talking about this, and there were some concerns from staff about us exempting these facilities. And it was going to reduce some form of our budget. You can't say it's not going to reduce budget. If you're getting $26,000 and now you're not getting it, there is going to be an effect. So I want to just reiterate that there was some concerns that I've heard from staff. And secondly, there are some fees that Stormwater require that we pay, that staff thought that we shouldn't be paying. So I just want to put that out there, since the board is there, that they need to think about the partnership, really being a true partnership, in that we give a little bit, they give a little bit. So that's what I would like to see the conversation kind of going in that direction. So this gives us time to look at it. And I think that we have a consensus that we want to do something, but we do need to have that conversation. So I'm in agreement with the tabling as well.
Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'd also like to see that the Water Authority could be charging the county that they're waiving, if they're waiving any at all. So I'd like to see if what, if that's, are they waiving any fees that the county should be paying?
The attorney is indicating that he has that information, if the board would like for Mr. Welch to come forward.
We would, we would honor, be honored to have an opportunity to sit down and talk. I think we've asked for a number of workshops over the last couple of years to try to have a meeting and discuss any of these issues that the, the board is seeing. And so we are open to doing that. We would like to do that as soon as possible, because that would afford us a resolution to this issue and any other issues that may exist. As to those fees, we, we routinely do not collect any impact fees from Henry County. And the, the cost to the ratepayers, who are your taxpayers, and the elect or the voters of Henry County, is in the amount of over a three-quarters of a million dollars. We don't collect those, because we have a partnership between the two of us. Every time that there's money shifting between the two entities, all you're doing is placing a higher burden on water ratepayers, or you're placing a higher burden on taxpayers. Either, either group is the same group you're sharing money from. So in this request, staff has worked out that there is about $26,000 owed, is an ongoing, which has been paid to the Tax Commissioner. There will be an ongoing stormwater assessment that will be paid by the Water Authority for its main campus. But we're happy to meet with you and discuss these details more thoroughly. The, the ongoing annual water sampling that the Water Authority does on behalf of the Board of Commissioners amounts to a project of $100,000 to $160,000, depending on the year. The stormwater utility rates are far lower than that on accumulated total. So on each year, and we're splitting that cost between the Water Authority and the Board of Commissioners, we're splitting that cost 50/50. That's the sampling cost, annual sampling cost. So in doing that, and we're administering as well, so we're providing that service at no cost to the taxpayers. Half of that service is being provided at no cost to the Board of Commissioners or the taxpayers. We're absorbing that through the ratepayers. So we're splitting that. And that's part of the partnership that we've worked out over the many years that we've been doing both water treatment and water quality.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Clemmons?
I hear the attorney saying that we're splitting the cost, but I think they also get some of our mills. I mean, there's a large amount of money. So in, in the conversation, I would also like to talk about how much of the mill can we get back to the county? So we can really have a partnership and really have a conversation.
Those mills, those mills you've contracted, this board has contracted with bondholders for that mill. So that's actually a decision you've already made, and that's a contract for 2030 through 2030. So there would be no way to rescind, to rescind that mills without breaching that bond agreement and forcing the county into default, which would affect your bond ratings and your ability to borrow money. So, and just making that very clear.
Yeah, I just, I don't want us to overlook that we do give that to the Water Authority.
The taxpayers do, yes, ma'am.
Well, that's who we represent. And so that 50/50, we're really not sharing, we're paying for. And we're talking about having a conversation, so we need to really have a conversation. And so Sherri, you just, stormwater fees that we pay, we don't pay. I need us to be very transparent and talk about really what staff has told us they're concerned about. I'm speaking because staff is concerned that there is more than we're giving than we should be giving. So we need to talk about that, so that we can make decisions that are best for the county.
When would the board like to meet? Because we'll.
Staff will get with you.
Let me now say, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you.
So I now need a motion on the table to, to move us forward, so.
I'll make a motion that we table this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Well, we do look forward to moving and having that meeting sooner than later. Okay?
And I just wanted to make sure, just to reconfirm, Commissioner Barr, you're looking to table the motion so that we can schedule a workshop meeting between the board, the Water Authority and the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move into our next item. And we welcome up Mr. Don Ash to make the presentation from Emergency Management regarding a resolution to authorize the execution of documents related to a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. We're excited that we were able to complete the process of our five-year hazard mitigation update. Let me start off by commending our staff, our team at the EMA, and our Emergency Management Department, and the efforts of all our county stakeholders and our team members of our county that participated in the program. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is an update to a plan that we're required to have. And it is important that we have four participation of all four municipal governments. And I'm excited to tell you that each of the cities have already adopted the resolution to adopt the five-year update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Hazard Mitigation Plan purpose is to develop a standalone plan that includes the participating jurisdictions. It increases public awareness of education and the plan and the process. And most importantly, it maintains our eligibility to seek out hazard mitigation grants. So I'm here to tell you that we have completed the process. Our plan has been approved by FEMA. All cities have adopted the program. I will tell you that the plan takes a look at four specific areas. Community profile, hazard analysis, hazardous identification, and vulnerability assessment. I can tell you that the number one threat to Henry County is still significant severe weather activities. From our plan development, it requires research and development. It gives us an opportunity for our entire community to participate. We have ongoing community meetings. Our consultant, because this was a grant-funded program through GMA and FEMA, was acting Atkins Consulting. They did our last update. So I'm here to tell you that the program has been completed. Our high risk is severe thunderstorms and high winds. Our moderate risk is winter storms and floods. And in our profile, we also look at dam and levee failures. With our process being updated and adopted by all four cities, the last hurdle we have is to have our county as a whole to adopt the plan and the resolution. And we will submit it back to FEMA and be completely in compliance with our operations. I'll take any questions you guys have for me this morning.
Well, we thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there any discussions? All in favor? Okay, it is passing unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Okay, we're now invite, invite up Mr. Salters to come and present a resolution regarding the purchase of a 14-passenger ADA bus with Federal Transit Administration Fund. So good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I bring before you a resolution authorizing the purchase of one 14-passenger bus utilizing the FTA 307 grant. The total cost for one passenger, excuse me, 14-passenger Star Trans Center to Shuttle Bus that is equipped with the wheelchair lift is $51,525.92. Funding is available within the Transit Department's FTA Administration, FTA 307 Grant. The grant requires a 20% local match. The total cost to Henry County is $10,315.18. This purchase is to replace a bus that has reached the designated useful life of 5,000 or 100,000 miles. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there any discussions or questions? All in favor? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons? Okay, oh, okay, we have a unanimous approval, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to our Henry County Fire Department Resolution regarding the approval of the purchase of a 2019 Ram Liberty ambulance conversion and the accompanying budget amendment. So we welcome up Captain Sam Polk.
Good morning, Chair, Wood Commissioners. There's an operational need within the Fire Department to replace an ambulance that was involved in an MVC last year and was deemed a total loss. We have gotten a quote from a local vendor for Braun Custom Ambulances, which is 10-8 Fire and Safety Equipment. The total price is $183,000 and, I'm sorry, 183,212. This is actually a NPP Gov. contract price that we get from them. The funds have been identified in two parts. Part was the check that we got for reimbursement for the total loss for the ambulance, and the other part was in salary savings.
So, that concludes your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
The question was, you said you have, you received part of this cost from, from your, I didn't get that part. I thought you said you received part of the cost to buy this from where?
Part of it, part of it was the check that was the reimbursement for the wrecked ambulance that was a total loss. The other 20,000, I think it is, is from salary savings.
Okay, so what, what amount are you looking for from us?
The total, the total is $183,212.
The whole amount from us, or that amount minus the salvage and the insurance?
The whole amount. It's, it involves two budget, two transfers. One is from the, the check for the money, the check for the totaling of the ambulance, and the other is the, to move the money from salary savings, to be able to spend it as capital.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I have questions.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Were we at fault in this accident?
No, it was a single-vehicle accident.
So we got insurance, and Sherri, you know where I'm going with this. We got insurance from ACCG. So we claimed it on our insurance, but did we claim it on the person who was at fault insurance?
It was a single-vehicle accident.
It was a single vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, it was ambulance against the tree.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Barr?
How did the tree cause the accident?
They, they actually, the driver left the road, came off the roadway.
Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Thank you, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now moving to our next item from Financial Services, which is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget to use fund balance to increase the contributions to the library. And we invite Mr. David Smith up for that presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County community. If you don't mind, I'd like Kathy to join me in case you have any questions. We are requesting to use fund balance in the amount of $115,000 to increase our contributions to the library. We don't want Henry County to be considered noncompliant with our Maintenance of Effort requirement. Restoration of a prior 5% cut to the library will help us meet the Maintenance of Effort requirement and preserve Henry County's eligibility for continued state and federal support. If you have any questions, I have Kathy here, the library director, to help me.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I just want to know, is there any other way that we can start planning in the future to have some of this money come from another source or another fundraising or something to keep on constantly tapping into the fund balance? Is that just going to be the norm each year, coming back to fund balance, constantly to get these monies for the library?
Commissioner, my preference is to not use fund balance for any normal operating expenditures. I really want to just use it for emergency operations. So that's the goal going into fiscal year 20. But currently, but currently, we're going to have to use it, because it was not budgeted for Kathy this year.
So can we challenge the library to start now, looking at ways to be a contributor as well, to what's coming for the next year, which will be 100-plus thousand dollars, to see how that can be done?
We have already submitted our budget packet to the County Finance Department for fiscal year 2020. We did ask for some increased funding for some items that we need. As far as other sources of revenue, there is no legal means for the library to, to charge for services or to generate our own revenue. We are entirely tax-funded. The contribution, however, does not come strictly from Henry County. If I could just have a second. This fiscal year, with the 5% restored, the BOC allocation for the current fiscal year is just a little under $2.3 million. However, we receive roughly $3 million in state and federal funds. And this budget amendment is to keep us compliant with the requirements. The state of Georgia has a Maintenance of Effort requirement for library services. Our funding from the BOC was reduced by 5% for this year over fiscal year 2018. The funding went down 5%. And the Maintenance of Effort requirement says that you have to continue to support the public libraries at the same or greater level from one year to the next. The only way that you can cut library funding is if the cuts are consistent with cuts to other county departments. So the state looks at how, how the Board of Commissioners is funding other, other library, other county departments that provide comparable types of services. Now, they're not going to compare apples and oranges. They're not going to compare library funding, for instance, to public safety. But they do compare it to other county agencies and departments that provide quality-of-life services. So they're going to provide, compare library funding to Parks and Recreation, to senior services. And what has gotten us into financial trouble this year with the state is that for fiscal year 2019, library funding, funding was reduced 5%, but Parks and Rec and.
Senior services.
for fiscal year 2019, library funding was reduced 5%, but parks and rec and, and senior services were increased somewhat. So, that's where the problem comes in. If, if, if they're getting increases at the same time that the library is being cut, that jeopardizes all of our state and federal funding. So, right now, what is at stake? And this is, I can provide you all with a copy of this letter. Some of you have already seen it. This is a letter from the State Library and Julie Walker, and the Board of Regents' Requirements for Public Library State Grant Fund, Section 4.4.4, states that local support for the current year shall be equal to or more than the preceding year. And local support is defined as funding provided to library system boards of trustees by local government agencies with taxing authority. So, that is the Board of Commissioners. That is your, your responsibility. And the way, the way the Board of Regents views public library funding is that the county is responsible for basic services, for providing basic library services. Everything that state and federal money provides is what they call enhancement services. So, these enhancement grants are what we're eligible for, and just a few of these, we have some state reimbursed professional positions within the library system. That's about $435,000 a year. We have participation in pines in Galileo. We are eligible for STEM grants, partnership programs with Georgia State Parks, the Atlanta Braves Zoo, Atlanta, Georgia Aquarium, and other state-sponsored activities. We're eligible for technology replacement and major repair and renovation grants. Roughly, our cataloging services interlibrary loan is about $30,000 a year, and currently the state spends about 1.5 million annually for the Galileo databases. These are our databases that provide homework research for everything from elementary through college level. Those databases include our job search service, software that assists with writing resumes, with writing cover letters, with test prep for everything from elementary school Common Core all the way through SAT, GED, GRE, and as well as civil service exams, all kinds of professional exam licensure required, where licensure is required, nursing, public service. So, all of this is what is at stake. Because that $115,000 was cut out of our budget this year, all of that could go away. And, and really, we're in a very vulnerable position because we discussed this with, with county during budget time last year, and, and the understanding was that if tax revenues were as predicted, that we would be able to get that money reinstated at the midpoint, about the midpoint of the fiscal year. So, now we're in the last quarter of the fiscal year, and the state is watching. I can tell you that the chancellor of the Board of Regents is watching and the state librarian is watching. They could withdraw support at any time. If they withdraw all of that, or, or even any of that, we can't provide service in the community. So, that's, that's where we are. That's how we got here. As far as funding looking forward, there is no other agency responsible for public library funding. We can't do it through fundraisers. We can't do it through charging for services. There's no other contributing authority except the Board of Commissioners. And so, what we're trying to avoid is exactly what you said. We don't want to be going back into the fund balance at this time next year. We need to get library funding as an established part of the annual budget.
That was what I was getting to. No one is trying to cut your services. There's no threat here, and we do realize the value you bring to the community.
Thank you.
That's been well stated, and you did tell us our responsibility. The question still goes back to my finance director. We do not like to use fund balance for certain things. It's there for a particular reason. And can we look forward to the next year, trying to determine how to make sure this doesn't happen again, and not have to go through fund balance to make it happen? And I'm assuming that all our libraries sit within the cities and city limits?
The Fairview Library is the only one that's not inside of a city limit.
We need to explore what other grants and what can cities and other people do to help since we're bringing this, this quality of life to their area. And again, that's directed to the director, understanding our responsibility to you.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add that if you, if you, you can certainly ask the cities to, to make a contribution, but if you do that, that legally gives them a seat on the library board. So, that's the, the trade-off for that. If they, if they provide ongoing financial support, and we have occasionally gotten some, some support from the cities for special projects, but if it's an ongoing expectation, that gives them a seat on the library board. Right now, we have just a phenomenal library board. It consists of one appointee from each district in Henry County, from each commissioner. Each of you has an appointee. The commission chair has an appointee, and the Board of Education has an appointee because they provide a small amount of annual funding. And if I may just recognize my, my, some of my library board members are here today. Dr. Rita Bailey, who is a district, she is the library board chair, and she is appointee of Commissioner Holmes from District 5. Mary Scroggs is here. She is the district appointee for District 2, Commissioner Clemmons. And Kathy Gilbert is here. She is the current appointee for District 4 and also the secretary of the library board. And we are very, very fortunate that we have a functional and really invested and smart library board. They work extremely well together. They provide phenomenal support to me, to the library staff, and I think are doing a really good job of communicating those library needs with, with the Board of Commissioners and with their other appointing agencies.
Well, we thank you for that. Okay, we have some comments from the other board, and we just wanted to make sure that we stay here. Okay, so Commissioner Bar, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I just had a comment. You know, Ms. Thomas, you weren't here last year when we did the budget, but this was something that happened during the budget process when they were cut 5%. It clearly states in the resolution that we're just restoring something they should have had and begin with. And I hope this, you know, in the future, we'll look at not doing those kind of cuts. But Kathy, while you're there, the last splash meeting we had, and I'm getting off a little bit, but we talked about the McDonough Library being the oldest in the county. And would you describe some of the, the maintenance problems that we have there? And talk about the grant that you talked to me about where we could do a, a grant where we put up 10% of the money and we get 90% back, up to $100,000. And would you kind of, kind of describe what kind of grant that would be? Anytime we could spend $10 and get 100 back, that's a pretty good investment, in my eyes.
I agree. We, currently, the legislature allot money every year for major repair and renovation grants for public libraries. Now, that money is, for anybody that doesn't know how, how we're structured, that money goes through the, the Board of Regents and then to Georgia Public Library Service, and at that level, it is distributed to counties who can show that they have matching funds in place to do those projects. Henry County is in somewhat of an enviable position in that all of our library buildings are fairly new. Our old, our newest building is nine years old. Our oldest building is 19 years old. So, there was a period of about 10 years where there was a lot of splosh activity going on with libraries. So, we have some beautiful facilities. The oldest building is the McDonough Library. That's the one that's 19 years old. And there were some design problems with that building when it was built, and I'm not pointing a finger at anybody because none of us were here back then. But there were some serious design flaws. One of them involved the flooring. There was an entire area, and it's still there now. If you walk into the McDonough Library, there's a huge area of public access computers where people can access the internet and word processing and, and all kinds of software that they might need to do their jobs or look for jobs or, or just for recreational purposes. There were no, in the original building design, there were no data drops and there were no electrical outlets in that area. And so, it had, the design had to be overhauled and put in a sort of a floating floor system in that whole part of the building. So, now we have areas where there are ramps that go up and down, and we have orange traffic cones sitting in places to keep people from stepping off of that, that suspended floor, that floating floor system. That's one of the issues. Another is a lighting issue. And generally, it is, it's just not a very functional space right now. Now, I will say that library, the library mission and values have not changed in decades. Service plans do change, though. Usage patterns change. Delivery systems change. And so, we have some space in that building that is not being used for what it was originally designed for, but we need to renovate it to make it functional for, for current usage patterns. And so, I have had one meeting already with Nathan Rawl from Georgia Public Library Service who administers those grants. We can apply for a major repair and renovation grant for the McDonough Library, and that is a 90-10 match. We have to come up with a 10% locally. The state provides 90% up to $1 million. Over $1 million, it's a 50-50 grant for that, any, any amount over $50, up to $2 million. So, what we don't, we don't need more space. We don't need to expand the footprint of the building, but we could overhaul the interior and make it more functional and make it more useful and, and make it more in keeping with the way people use public libraries today. We don't need as much space, for instance, for print reference books because those are all going digital. We need more space for maybe a maker space or a computer lab, something that would better reflect the things that people are actually using libraries for. Now, in the current, in our current budget request for, for 2020, we are, we have been approved for two grants for Henry County from the state for that repair and renovation money. One is for entirely new flooring at the Stockbridge Library. That is our busiest branch, and that building opened in 2014, I believe, and had, the flooring up there has absolutely taken a beating, not from any misuse, but just absolute wear and tear. So, we can get a 50-50 grant for that. And the McDonough Library, we can do a short-term lighting improvement at the McDonough Library, and we are, we do have the funding in place. The state funding is available if we can come up with the local funding, and that was part of our, our budget request from the county was the, the money for that. For, to fund both, to match both grants, it would be $85,000 in local money. But the lighting issue in McDonough is also a safety issue. We have some very dark corners. We have some areas that it's difficult, even with all the lights on, to see, you know, to read the spine labels, to read the titles of books. So, it, it's a practical matter, but it's also a safety matter as well. So, those, those things are, are pending immediately, but we can certainly go after that $100,000, that 90-10 grant to just renovate the, the whole interior of the library and make it more in keeping with, with use, library usage patterns.
All right. Hold on. Do you have any other questions or comments from the board? I, I basically agree that we definitely support our libraries, looking forward to a better budgeting process. We've got sensitivities like this that we're paying attention to it, so we do not use fund balance unless it is true of an emergency of some sorts. So, thank you for that. All right, so at this time, if there are no other comments or questions, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. The resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll now invite up our county attorney, and thank you, Ms. Pulaski, for just joining in today and sharing your expertise. And, and as Mr. Jockstetter comes, we'll prepare for the next informational item only, and this is regarding the appointment and removal of members of commissioners' boards and agencies.
So, good morning. I was asked to provide the board an outline of the appointments, the appointment processes, the terms, and the manner in which members of various boards could be removed. I have done so. You all have a memorandum in front of you, you should, that goes through it in a little bit of detail. What I've put up on the display board is just a short summary of, I think it's about 12 or 13 boards, which walks through whether or not the appointees are by district and whether or not the terms of the appointees correspond with the term of the commissioner appointing them. That seems to be, based on the questions I've received, the primary focus of the inquiry. I don't want to go through it in detail, but I would point out the, I'm going to sort of point out those boards or authority which do not necessarily have district appointees and/or whose terms don't necessarily correspond with the terms of the commissioners. The first one you'll see, obviously, if it says yes, that means that it satisfies both of those requirements. The first one that doesn't is Connecting Henry, Inc., and it doesn't necessarily follow district appointments and district terms, but it's also an outside agency. It's not your agency. Members of the, or the Board of Commissioners does have appointment authority to some of the board members, but not all of them. I put a B in that, and that just tells me to tell you that the way that could be changed would be a revision to the bylaws of Connecting Henry. And Connecting Henry, the board of Connecting Henry would have to author, would have to make that change, not you. The next one that's something other than an L is the Library System Board of Trustees, and there's a star beside it. And the reason I put an L there is because it would require a change in the law, but as you just heard from the previous presentation, the way you've treated, historically, the way we've treated the library board appointees has been both by district, and for the most part, the terms have expired along with the commissioner terms. But the, the law, the law, the way appointments are made to the library system is specified by law, not by your ordinances. So, in order to change that, you would have to have a legislative change. The General Assembly would have to make that change. But for the most part, the library board of trustees, I think those appointments satisfy the goals that I've been, that have been described to me. The next one that's not a yes is the hospital authority. The manner in which appointments are made to the hospital authority is, is, well, it, it satisfies both of the requirements. So, you make district appointments, and the terms are, they're two-year terms, and those terms ultimately end when your, when commissioner terms end. The hospital authority is a very odd board, to say the least, in the manner of appointments. You don't really make the appointment to the hospital authority board. You make nominations for appointments, and I think we have to nominate three every time a, a board member, a board seat comes open and the hospital authority chooses from, the, the existing hospital authority chooses from those three. And that's a function of the law. That's the way the law is set up for the, for the hospital authority board. In order to change that would require legislative change. That would require the General Assembly to make the change, and that's uniform statewide, essentially. So, it would probably require change in the general law as opposed to just a local legislative action. Next is the Henry County Board of Elections and Registration. The appointments to the Henry County Board of Elections and Registration are a function of the law, but it's local legislative authority. The way, the way it happens today is the Board of Commissioners makes one appointment. There's two appointments to elections made by the, by the governing board of the Republican Party, two by the governing board of the Democrat Party, Democratic Party, and one by this Board of Commissioners. In order to change it would take a change in legislation. That can be accomplished with local legislation. I, I doubt that you would see the legislators approve of a board of elections that is appointed completely by the elected officials. I think you would almost always see, the legislature expects some outside appointing agency to look after the elections rather than simply people that are elected. So, that would require change in legislation. The Department of Family and Children's Services likewise is, the manner in which you make those appointments is by legislation. My recollection is there is a very large number of people appointed to that board because it, it takes into account more than just Henry County. I think it's a region-wide thing. So, in, in order to make that change, it would require legislative change, and it would also probably require impact, input from all of the other agencies that have a say into the, into the de-facts. The Henry County Council on Aging satisfied both of those requirements. The Henry County Board, Henry County Board of Health, I put an L beside that because to, to have each commissioner have an appointment and those terms correspond with your term members would require a change in legislation. As it is today, it's also a, a district-wide board. It's not just the Henry County Board of Health. The, the Board of Health is part of District 6, I think, and there are appointments made by a number of places. By law, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners also serves on the Henry County Board of Health. If you wanted to change that, we would have to go to the legislature to make that change. And lastly, I put the Henry County Board of Assessors, and there's an O beside that one because in theory, you could change that by ordinance. Now, the way the Henry County Board of Assessors works today is there are five appointments. Those appointments are made by the board. I think historically, they've been made district by district, but the law doesn't necessarily say that they should be. The law does not say that you can make those by district. So, I think in order to make the law, to make it required to be by district, you would have to change the legislation. But because there's five, you're allowed to have between four and six members, and you can establish that by ordinance. You could potentially have the terms of the members of the Board of Assessors correspond with your terms almost. And the reason I say almost is there's a quirky law in the Board of Assessors statute that says that a majority of the Board of Assessors can't be newly appointed at one time. They don't want a bunch of new people coming on to a Board of Assessors. So, if you had five members to the board, you've got five members today at the Board of Assessors. If you were to make those by district, which the law doesn't really allow, but you could by, you know, agreement among yourselves, you could make that work, but you could not have those terms match yours specifically because three of you have your terms expire at the same time. So, somebody would have to be the odd man out. The, a term, somebody's term would have to overlap. In order to change that, you would have to get the general law changed, which again, I doubt that would be feasible. It's certainly worth looking at if you want to. But the Board of Assessor specifically limits new members by saying you can't have a majority of new members come on the board. of new members come on the Board at any one time. And that's the state law, not anything in the county ordinances. But, you can make some changes to the Board of Assessor's manner of appointment by changing their terms, the expiration terms, but again, you all wouldn't be able to achieve that goal. I did not look at exactly how those terms end today, but for the most part, they overlap your terms, and they really do that by design, and that's intended to keep the people that assess taxes separate from the people that are elected. But, those are certainly things we can look at. Now, I did not put in the chart, but I will briefly address the boards in which you can remove a member for convenience, just because you want to remove a member, as opposed to for cause, which would require some finding by somebody that there's been wrongdoing. The ones that you can just remove a member because you want to put someone new in, in the middle of their term, would be the Recreation Commission, the Zoning Advisory Board, and Henry First. Those three boards or agencies, you can just make a change whenever you want to make a change. The other agencies, all of the other agencies, either the law specifies the manner in which you remove somebody, specifically the Board of Assessors, there's a specific process that actually goes to the court, and the court would determine whether or not someone is removed. The other ones, all of the other agencies would require essentially a finding for cause, a finding of some bad act, some neglect of duty, some action beyond simply they no longer satisfying me, and would probably require litigation or remove them from office. Those changes could only be made legislatively. So, we would have to go, and we would have to walk through each one of these boards and authorities. And the ones that you can't amend by yourself, you would have to go to the legislature and ask them to make those amendments for you. So, I've given you a little bit more detail in the memorandum that you all have in front of you. Obviously, if any of you want to talk more specifically about any of these, I'd be happy to do that, either now or at any other time. This is a lot of information to throw at you, but I promised you I would get this information to you in this format.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barron?
Yeah, Patrick. On the Hospital Authority...
Yes.
What do they do since we've traced it out with...
Well, you know, the Hospital Authority now is the landlord to Piedmont Henry, and I don't know what they do beyond serving as landlord. I don't know what, I don't know all the details on the agreement between Piedmont Henry and the Hospital Authority, but I would presume that they are managing the property, that they're managing some level of the relationship between the authority and the hospital and some of the sort of public requirements that the hospital engages in. But, their role has diminished greatly over the years. It used to be they ran the hospital. They no longer really run the hospital. Piedmont Henry owns it.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll just move to the next item then, which is a Public Health Resolution, approving an ordinance amendment to establish reasonable standards for individuals performing body art procedures and for facilities from which the procedures are provided.
All right, thank you. So, we were requested to review the, what I will call the Body Art Ordinance that Henry County has in effect, and that deals with things like tattooing and piercing, to determine if there was any changes that needed to be made to sort of bring our ordinances up to date with modern practices. And the ordinance before you today is a brand-new ordinance, as opposed to our older ordinance. It really has two primary changes. The primary change is, number one is the body artist, the tattoo artist, or the person performing the work. Under our old ordinance, that person had to go get a full health examination from a doctor and have a report presented to the Board of Health before they could get a permit that said, "I'm in good health." We were perhaps the only jurisdiction that had that level of a health checkup requirement. Most jurisdictions do require the artist to be tested for bloodborne diseases, for hepatitis and things like that, that could get transmitted if they poke their own finger while they're poking your skin. We've retained that section, but we took out the overall health examination section. So, now, under this ordinance, in order to get a permit from the Board of Health, you have to submit a certificate that you've been tested for these specified bloodborne diseases, bloodborne illnesses. Or, if you've got a legitimate objection to doing that, there are people that, for religious bases, or maybe some other health basis, object to having that done, and it acknowledges that, but you have to prove it. It's almost like conscientious objectors to the draft. You have to prove that you've got a legitimate religious conviction that would bar you from giving those kind of blood samples. The other change it made was for visiting artists. Most jurisdictions have a provision that allows an artist from somewhere else to show up in your jurisdiction and get a specific permit for a visiting artist, where they basically work in someone else's studio, and this ordinance provides for that as well. This ordinance has been presented to the Henry County Department of Health. It's been reviewed by the health professionals there. They did not voice any objection to it. They felt like the protections that we kept were sufficient. A version of this was presented to the Georgia Legislature this year. It didn't go anywhere. I don't think it went anywhere out of any objection to it, frankly. I think it didn't go anywhere out of sort of a lack of interest. I don't think body art regulations were a big deal this year down at the Georgia Dome. So, I think the fact that it didn't get through, it was presented in the House, it received a favorable report from whichever committee it was assigned to, but it never made it to the floor for a vote, and I really think that was just a lack of interest. So, this ordinance is before you today. It comes with an approval from the Henry County Board of Health. There are similar, this is very similar to what exists in most other jurisdictions. I can't tell you every jurisdiction, but most other jurisdictions have regulations that are relatively on par with what this is, and this is essentially the same regulation that was presented to the state and to the legislature. Obviously, it wasn't approved. I don't know that anybody objected to it. I don't know if anybody was in favor of it. I can't speak to really why it died, the fate it died, but I truly believe it was just a lack of interest. So, it's before you for your consideration. And again, the two changes I listed are really the primary changes. There's some little changes in the manner and the processes and things like that, but those really happen over at the Board of Health. The Board of Health issues permits for these individuals. You don't, but we want to make it an ordinance so that we can enforce it. The Board of Health has its own authority. It has the authority to issue permits, but we want to make sure it's an ordinance so we have the county's enforcement authority behind those permits. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Patrick, this is a good example of the government overly regulating businesses. I know that the Department of Health has approved this. How did Henry County get involved in creating this policy in the first place?
Well, I don't know. I can tell you that the policy that was previously adopted did correspond with a previous policy that the Board of Health had, but I think it's like a lot of other things. I think as society changes, the manner in which we regulate things like body artists and things like that, as those things become more acceptable, I think we start, we begin to accept the fact that they're out there. I think the requirement for a full health assessment was probably just born out of, nobody really knew. It was a little bit of an overreaction. Obviously, there are bloodborne diseases that we should be very cautious about, and I think when this was adopted, it was probably, well, let's just make sure people are healthy before they do it, and let's put people through the process of having to go basically get a physical examination done. I think we've come to realize that that might have been overkill, and I think the industry may have realized that's been overkill. But, you know, I also think that we're good at some things, right? I think the Board of Commissioners and your staff, we're good at some things. What we're not good at is knowing some of these important health issues, and you've got a Board of Health, and they are good at it. So, there's medical physicians on the board, there's nurse practitioners, and I think if you defer those types of decisions to them, I think you're doing yourselves a favor.
Yeah, and I think another reason that I was concerned about this was that if we're overregulating, then that causes, a lot of children are now getting tattoos. And so, by us having things like this in place, then they begin to get illegal tattoos in the homes or at school, and so I think that having the Health Department to oversee this, I mean, that's what the state does, is a good idea. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that this was a good example of causing people to get illegal things done.
And to be clear, we've done absolutely nothing to allow people under the age of 18 to lawfully get any of this kind of work. I think they can. I think, I don't remember the age, but I think with parental permission, they can do it maybe down to 16. But, we haven't touched those regulations, those regulations have remained.
All right, Commissioner Thomas?
I agree that this needs to say to the Health Department, because I was sitting there wondering, how in the world are you planning to enforce it? I mean, you're putting something on paper that may look good from one perspective, but enforcing it is another perspective. And like you just stated, the Health Department has done a very good job in making sure these type of things are managed. So, I don't see why we need to touch it.
Well, let me tell you why. So, the Health Department can issue a permit and revoke a permit, but that's all they can do. We have a little bit more enforcement mechanism. We can cite somebody for violation of these rules if we adopt an ordinance. We do the same thing with septic tanks, and we do the same thing with swimming pools. A lot of these other things that are really governed by the Board of Health, we adopt as an ordinance their rules. So, the Board of Health can come to code enforcement and say, "This individual is violating the terms of his or her permit, or they're violating these regulations, and we want to cite them for it," and they're issued a citation, and they're forced to pay a fine. So, that's the reason we adopt these, is to provide better enforcement mechanisms. All the Board of Health can do is say no to you. But, if you, and I can tell you, we prosecute people for pools that open without proper authorization. All the Board of Health can do is say, "You can't open your pool," and they can't, they don't have any way to shut them down. I mean, they can put a sign up, and they can say, "You're shut down," but we can take them into court and force them to comply. And that's why it is a good idea for this board to adopt those rules. You're adopting their rules, you're making them your ordinance.
I think this is a good one. Any other questions? Mr. Thomas?
No, I'm good.
Okay, any others from the board? Having sat on that board, I concur with everything that you've stated, so thank you for the presentation in that matter. Okay, so at this time, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. That resolution passes unanimously. We're now moving to our public comment section of our agenda, and this is a time where we welcome citizens to come and voice their county-related opinions. They are requested to sign up prior to the beginning of the meeting, and will be granted five minutes to come. And so, at this time, do we have any public comments today?
Sure. We have five public comments today. Bill Tony, Tim Colbreth, Larry Maury, Warren Holder, and I cannot, Amun.
Okay. Good morning. If you will state your name, please, for the record.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia.
Those ladies that come before y'all, it takes a lot of guts to do this stuff. They're in a dangerous thing trying to fight trafficking. Anytime you're trying to take out bad guys, it's dangerous, and I take my hat off to them. Let me, I have some questions about, and I know that nobody's going to answer now, but during the Super Bowl, how many arrests were made in Henry County of trafficking? How many things happened? How many forums have been brought to the county? How many times have we invited people in to give forums? We contacted some churches on this right here, and they don't want to get political. That was our words. I've got one text, the guy says, "We don't know part of it in the church." Well, it kind of falls back to the county as to where they can, it's a lot easier for y'all to put a forum on, and y'all can get it out and, you know, and put it on, and let people know what's going on with this stuff. It really is, it's getting to be a problem, a bad problem. I'd like to know if we have a task force in place for this. I know that we had a gang task force at one time. There was like three or four people on the task force, and now it got down to one, and I don't even know if we got to one anymore. So, I challenge y'all to kind of start digging into some of this stuff. As being commissioners, I think that's part of your job. All right, we had a thing on the Water Authority. I had concerns when I was filling up my pool last year, that when the water came out, it was green. I came before the board with the same picture. It was right out of my faucet, green right out of the faucet. Okay, I had a call back from a person from the Water Department, and he said that was totally normal. Now, you've got the whole Water Authority Board here, and I'd like for them to tell everybody that that's normal. We're paying Mr. Farmer over $300,000 a year, which he makes more than the mayor of New York, to give us clean water, and to me, that does not look like clean water. I'd just like for everybody to do their job, get everything done the way they're supposed to. We had the insurance guy up here, Mr. Gasses, and I'll be honest with you, I don't even know why we have him. He's just, I'm thinking he's just a broker, and we don't have anybody in the county that can negotiate an insurance deal? That doesn't make sense to me. You've got some pretty smart folks here. You know, and we buy stuff, buy the millions every year. We spend all kind of money, so I don't know. But, I would like for y'all to think about and get with the police department on these task forces and all, where we can, you need to get this trafficking stuff taken care of before. It really, really is something you can't hardly control anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a Mr. Tim?
I'm Larry Maury, 43 Walker Drive in McDonough. My wife and I left our school the other day, and in an hour, a county of 13, Henry County Police Cars. But yet, every time I pick up the newspaper, all I hear about what happens other than traffic tickets. It seems to me that we might need to take some people out of, I know you make a lot of money off writing tickets, I understand that, but if you don't start doing something about these robberies and car stealing and gangs in Henry County, it's going to run all your good people off, if you put it, think about that. Your attorney just talked about Board of Registars. A few years ago, I went before a kangaroo court called the Henry County Board of Registars, and if that wasn't a fiasco from hell, I don't know what is. It was about Mr. Preston at that time. Mr. Wilson took his place. He finally went to Tennessee. Your county attorney wrote two different opinions to the Attorney General for the State of Georgia. I gave y'all copies, but you never done anything about it, but I didn't expect you to. But, I did give you copies of it. I appreciate the newest commission member mentioning insurance. Three years ago, I bought a gentleman to the county that offered to bid the insurance off against the major insurance firms and give his commission back to the county. We didn't do that because we switch and bait and manipulate. We don't want to bid against the three majors. We want to negotiate. That's because we got... against the three majors, we want to negotiate. That's because we got an A-team of people that's making money off of the insurance. I noticed your, your people of Henry County had not abused the system, the insurance system. The premiums were far greater than the claims. A good negotiating tool, but it don't do no good if the A-team negotiates for you, ladies and gentlemen, and manipulates those numbers to where you don't save money for your taxpayers. That was a good question you asked, because they don't bid it off, and that's a fact. The last thing I'm going to say is this. One of your Board members knows this to be a fact, because he was told by a gentleman that passed a while back, that I wasn't going to leave him alone, and I wasn't. I think it's time for you, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, to ask for a full FBI investigation, forensic copy of what went on with Tussah Hall Reservoir, the manipulation of the purchase price and the timber, and also lots that went to certain individuals fronting Tussah Hall. And it probably needs to go into tax credits, timber sales, even of other reservoirs. You see, there's a, there's a empire within an empire here. There's an empire within Henry County, and it's called the Water Authority. And this, it's the most cushy job in the county. When I, when I was running for office, I couldn't understand. One morning, I went to a breakfast, and it was a biscuit and sausage breakfast, and it was one of the Board members there that morning told me, basically told me, said, "You, you can run all you want to, but you ain't going to win. Water Authority's going to decide who, who is the Commissioner." I was used to that, I understood that, and, and it was true. You see the cushy jobs in the whole county is Water Authority, because you get appointed, and you're just about, they run the county. You may think you do, but they don't. If you'll do what I ask you to do, and have the FBI come in, because you can, you can bring them in, this body can, right here, or one.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Well, you know, everybody else had 30 minutes, except me. But I figured that. I figured you'd be like that.
Okay, I understand that we skipped over an individual, so if you could call that second person, because we definitely want to respect the order.
Tim Culberth, McDonough, Georgia. Let me set this out real quick. Everything that I'm fixing to say, I have in this envelope right here in front. Emails, pictures, everything's right here. And this book is years and years of work compiled on Nash Farm about the history. But I don't have time, but just for one. It has, I'm going to start off with this. It has been stated that there was never a battle out at Nash Farms. Well, somebody needs to tell the Department of Interior this information from the county, because not only was it a battle, and it talks about Lovejoy Station, which many Commissioners have talked about, but it also talks about here how the American Battle Protection Program has gone in here and said they need to open up the borders of this battle to include not only Clayton County, but the fighting in and around Nash Farm, in and around. Now, this is from the Department of Interior. Now, if you look at this page, if I can get it over here, there's three things. This, these lines here are where the survey was done by this department. This right here, if you can see the red here, it talks about core battles. This section right here from the interior is Nash Farms. Everything in yellow right here, down here at the bottom, says that this should be potential historical landmarks in Henry County. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking. I didn't think we could ask questions.
Please, let's allow the constituent to continue. We'll hold comments later. Thank you.
So, another thing here, and as far as a date, there's your date right there. This is from Mr. Nash himself. These are claims he made against damages against his farm back in 1871. Also, on the very back here, these are people that are not even of Henry County, that were there, did their own surveys, that were there. Uh, this right here, if you can see down here at the bottom, these are some websites. They don't even care about Henry County. They don't care that Henry County exists. These are websites you can go to that specifically say things about Nash Farms. Now, I've got one in particular right here. According to emails that were sent out, according to statements that were made about us being racist, white supremists, what you see before me today is not disrespect. It's to show you that, on my best, my dad's life is on here, my grandfather's life's on here. One of the greatest men that ever walked, Robert E. Lee, is on here. It's history. That's what it is. We're not saying that everything was right. The Sons of Confederate Veterans have never said that we condone any of the actions, much less all of them, okay? We're not saying that. We're saying it's history. It's unfortunate, but it's history. Now, I will challenge this Board today. If you want to remove history, I'm your man. I've got your back. But we remove all aspects, including slavery, from Henry County. School books, libraries, everything. We're a bad group, but yet Henry County allows us to have our own camp and do our own roads. Now, the reason why this is so important, if you see this right here, where it says, "General Lawrence Sullivan Sull Ross," okay? Well, see, if you erase history, you got to erase this man right here. This is Holt Collier. Awesome. I suggest you look him up. Not only was he a great man, but he fought in the Civil War. He fought at Nash Farms with the Ninth Texas Cavalry. His general was this, you can look him up, you can look him up, okay? This man here, they replaced his headstone back years ago in 2004, because they wanted to honor this man. Here's a couple more pictures right here. We're supposed to be racist? See this man right here? He's in Atlanta, Mr. Amos Rucker, okay? The SCV balked his graveside and his wife. He was a member of the Sons of Confederate Veterans. Here's another one right here. So I ask you to please reconsider.
Okay. We'll now move into our next, two more. I know we have two more, just want, if you'll call their names, so we can make sure we're going in the right order.
Warren Holder, 2119 Le Guin Mill Road, Locust Grove. First of all, I want to thank you for the privilege of being able to come. This is the first time I've been back since I was on that side of the bench. I want to thank you for doing a very thankless job. You, you can't do anything right. If you do, you get chastised tremendously for it, and you get very little praise. What, I know I don't have but five minutes, and I certainly can't get started, because what I wanted to talk about today was the Boards', the way we deal with Boards throughout history. And I know today, we've heard a lot of comments. We've heard good and bad. I've been on both sides of the bench. But today, I'm going to leave it in questions for you as the Board, and, and a very able staff that can answer these questions. First of all, we talked about, the two-mill tax has always been a very sore spot with, with people. And I would like for you to investigate it. Patrick has all of the information, why it was done, how the challenges have been done throughout the years. Also, going forward from the two-mill tax implementation, let's go to the first sploßed. The first sploßed was, was put before the voters of Henry County in 1994, and it was heavily defeated, because it was all about infrastructure. 1996, it was a mixed use, and it passed, and, and that was sploßed one. I took office in, in January 97, so I was, I was here through the first three sploßes. So my point is, I served with Bruce. He's the only one of the Board members that I have served with, but I served with Bruce. You need to talk to the staff, and look back, and see why. We talk about the sploßed in, in utility relocations within county right-ofways. We need to look at that, and I'm putting that as a question. Second thing, we constantly are, are, are thinking about the Water Authority and what they owe the county. I want you to be mindful of something, and I know Patrick is, Patrick was here at the time, Sherry can answer it, Ron could, Rocky was here. Why was this done? And I'm going to leave it as a question. I can answer it, but I, I don't have the time to do it. These are questions that need to be answered. Another thing, and, and, and look at this. We talked about a million and a half dollars or whatever of projects, and we were, we were going to pay $26,000 in fees. I want you to look closely, and these are projects that I can attest to, because I was there. I was the Commissioner at the time. Let's take Peaksville Road, and look at a bridge project over the Tussah Hall Reservoir. Water Authority spent over $4 million on the bridge and the structures along that road for that reservoir, because the Water Authority at that time wanted to cul-de-sac Peaksville Road, and I wouldn't allow it. I thought it was, would have been a, a major east-west thoroughfare. The Water Authority bought, paid for those bridges. Also, on sploßed projects, and not just sploßed, but any repaving project, go back and check the records and see how much right-of-way was donated by the Water Authority through their property for pay, road improvements. So these, these are some things that definitely need to be talked about. It is imperative that these two Boards are able to sit down, discuss this, because we're all working for the same people, and that's the people of Henry County. And we need to give the, the taxpayers the best bang for the buck that we can. But it's not about you against me or him against her. That's not the issue. We're working for the citizens of this county, and I, I certainly, Chairman Wood, I hope you can fit it in and get this Board to a joint meeting, because it is imperative that this take place. And there are other questions too, but I'm out of time, and I'm not going to do, do anything other than that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We'll now invite up our last public comment.
Good morning. Can you, y'all can.
You can use either one of those microphones as well.
First, I'd like to say thank you to all of you, in some capacity, outside of Commissioner Barham. I know you, and I know the work that you do throughout the community. Oh, I'm sorry. Akhnaat Amun, 209 Topeka Court.
You don't have to have your address, but your name is fine. Thank you.
Um, so again, thank you. But I did have a question regarding the cityhood of existing Hampton, Stockbridge, McDonough, and Locust Grove. I've done a bit of research and found that I most likely would have to go through the State General Assembly, but I was wondering, and I guess wanted to at least communicate an interest in ensuring that we can expand the boundaries of existing cities and municipalities, because as I currently reside, I'm a citizen of Stockbridge, but not necessarily associated with Stockbridge. And so, it was more of a query. And now, of course, I know that this is a forum for public comment, but I've reached out to the local city that I reside in, the one that I work in, and I haven't had much of support. So, to the Commission, or the Board of Commissioners, is that something that I need to do at this body, or do I need to contact my state representatives? And I apologize about this.
No apologies. Okay, can you restate your question again?
So, for instance, with, with the existing cutout of cities across Henry County, what would be the most appropriate way of trying to ensure that we work towards expanding city limits as they currently have existed over time, considering the growth and development of Henry County? And prior to, you know, contacting my representatives, I wanted to at least make what I felt was the best first step in reaching out to you as a group, considering the effects of not just where I reside, which is Stockbridge, but the four existing cities.
Okay. All right, well, this is the public comment section, and we, we will allow maybe the County Manager or someone, or the County Attorney, to speak with you afterwards.
Okay, cool. Well, I appreciate that. And again, thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public comment section. So we will now move into item 22, which is the approval of our amendments for the March 19th regular Board of Commissioners meeting. If there were no changes or revisions, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Okay, the amendments are unanimously approved. We're now moving to Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioners that have any comments? Do have one item. Our July, our next, our meeting in July is on July the 2nd, which is the week of, the 4th of July. Just wanted to hear the Board's pleasure, whether or not y'all want to keep that meeting on July the 2nd, or move it to July the 9th, and if we do, it's going to call some back-to-back meetings. So just wanted to hear Commissioners' comments regarding that, so that we can advise our county clerk. So y'all want to leave it on July the 2nd, or move it to July the 9th?
I recommend we move it to July 9th.
Okay. Well, we, we do need to amend the agenda. We do need to take a vote on this. So right now, there is a motion to move it to July the 9th. Is there a second?
I see.
Oh, no, let me stop. I got to stop. Okay, I have to have the motion to amend the agenda first. Do we have a, a motion to amend the agenda to take a vote on this? Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
And a second. All in favor to amend the agenda to discuss this? Okay, okay, now, the floor is now open for a motion to, to move it to July the 9th. Is, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, so any questions or comments? All in favor of moving it to July the 9th? Okay, thank you. All right. The only other item is, I just wanted to courtesy the Board, that the Atlanta Region Commission is having its work session at, hosted by the Atlanta Motor Speedway this month. So I just wanted to let you know that we'll have the Atlanta, the Atlanta Region Commission is, is, is indeed a working session. So again, the Atlanta Motor Speedway, so it'll give us a chance to highlight Henry County again. So I wanted to courtesy you on that. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll now see if there are any comments from the County Manager.
Yes, Gerald, I do have one comment. I wanted to make the Board aware that on this Monday, April 8th, we will be opening our Henry Cares Employee Wellness Center to all of our employees. We will have a ribbon cutting, and we'll certainly extend the invitation to the Board to be a part of that. But we're really excited about getting the Wellness Center open. And just in light of the conversation this morning earlier from the presentation regarding the insurance, we're hoping that we can certainly, in the coming year, look at reducing some of our claim costs. So I would invite all of our Board members, if you have the opportunity today, I know it's been a long morning, to just take a trip right across the street, right behind the, the Environmental Health Department, or Department of Human Services, and our facility is located there. We have our nurse practitioner and medical assistant that's actually on staff. They're doing some training this week, and then we will open the doors on Monday morning. So again, thank you, Board, for your support of this initiative, and we're really, really hoping that we can get our employees well, and making sure that they're taking care of themselves. I have no additional comments. Um, we also will be posting some information regarding a groundbreaking for Station 8. That information will be posted on our county website, and I do believe we have a date confirmed for
The 12th, next Friday.
April 12th. April 12th. It will be April 12th at 10:00 a.m., and we will definitely get invites out to the board on that as well. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Anything else from the county manager?
That is all.
Okay. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, on April 16th, we will have our 6:30 p.m. regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and then on May 7th at 9 o'clock a.m. would be our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Regarding the budget hearings and adoption meetings, the first public budget hearing is going to be on April 16th at 6:30 p.m., and then there will be a public hearing and budget adoption on May 7th at 9 o'clock a.m. So, at this time, I'll check with the county attorney, see if we have any items for the executive session.
I know it's late, but I do have some pending litigation that I really do need to discuss with you.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll call for a motion to enter into executive session.
Excuse me, could I make an announcement?
Okay, let's hold that motion, and so we'll go back to Commissioner's comments. Yes, ma'am?
Please excuse me. I just want to announce, because we have some of our first responders here today, that there is a luncheon on Monday, April 8th for first responders. That's being hosted by myself and Councilman Thomas. That will be at 12 o'clock at the Mayor Manders Center, and it is free to the first responders, and we have been sending that out. So, thank you for letting me state that out of order.
Okay, very good. Okay, so regarding the executive session, I know we need to... So, we now need to open the floor for a motion to enter into executive session.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussions? All in favor of entering to an executive session? All right, we're ready, Stephanie? Okay, we now call for a motion to reconvene from executive session. We have a motion and a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Okay, we now request a motion to approve the affidavit pertaining to the executive session. Floor is open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussions? All in favor? The affidavit is approved. So, we're now... Anything from our county attorney to state for the record?
There's no action needed.
Okay, so no action needed, so therefore, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Thank you.